Three, four, five, six.
Correct.
Four plus one.
There's Jermaine.
Richards. A few moments behind. Yeah, we just can't take action. It's an academic discussion. Ready? Okay. Good evening. We'll call the meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated to order. Today is Thursday, June 17th, 2021, start time at 6:30. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting such notice in town hall and the township's website by notification to newspapers on December 23rd, 2020, of the schedule for 2021, and by providing notice to the township clerk. Can I ask, we all stand for the salute to the flag?
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can you please call the role?
Jermaine Coligan.
Here.
BC Cat's Levine, me here. Andrew is not here as of yet. Nadez Nicole.
Yeah.
Michael Parlevekio.
Here.
Steven Weiner.
Here.
Richard is not here.
That's it. Okay. Do we have our five? Okay, let me begin by reading our CID mission statement. The purpose of a special improvement district, also known as the CID, is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township CID ordinance designates a new district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. Thank you, Jackie, for these.
Michael, I'm realizing I didn't do the non-voting members. I'm supposed to check that. So Mayor Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
And Alex McDonald. Sorry about that.
Okay, moving on to, thank you, Tracy. Moving on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes from May 13th, 2021, which have been circulated. I don't know if anybody's made any edits, changes, or has any comments to make. If none, I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving those minutes from the May 13th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Okay, time for a public comment. I'd ask any member of the public who wishes to speak, when you come to the lecture, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to Tracy Levine. That's at tracy@explorermilburnshorthills.org. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes each. Members of the public who also wish to participate in the meetings may do so via Zoom at this point, which I think Alex is coming to an end soon, right? More to come on that. Individuals calling in will be able to fully participate in the meeting during the appropriate public comment periods as well. So if anybody is online, you also will have three minutes to speak. So we'll start with those people who have called in. If anybody's here. Okay, so I go to members of the public who wish to speak in person.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Feld, living in Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I think the first thing I'd like to mention is that subsequent to May 13th meeting, a letter was received or sent by the state denying the application or Main Street Jersey designation. I think the record should reflect that back. Disputes as to why it was denied, whether you had to buy it. Because it goes back to since my first appearance in September on video, and my live appearance in December. There are serious issues as to whether this entity is valid under state law. And through Oprah, we have not received any written opinion from any attorney regarding the validity of that entity, nor what is the effect of filing a lawsuit within the 20-day estoppel period of the original adoption of that ordinance. I, your fiduciaries of the trust, I urge you to have caution. The township committee meetings have been very heated last two sessions. And I heed, sometimes you don't have to listen to me, but you should heed the comments from Thomas the very seasoned attorney. You took moderate litigation. On June 15th, and I discovered that today, and I posted that on the patch, I found out that the township had filed a discovery motion. You look at what the sharp elbow litigation is a prerogative reduction through asking for tax returns. It's harassment. In addition, there's a notice from the court telling about what discovery, but the notice, which is computer generated, states that the court has the authority to order mediation. This township has decided not to mediate, but to litigate. I'm urging you to caution because you're now representing an entity that I, various other people, including Tom do not believe is valid under state law. Need to take time out. People have not heeded the advice of various state agencies. First was local finance board regarding the conflict. Look at the state Main Street, New Jersey, application denial. The way the letter is written, I think there's a paragraph saying you need to go back. I think that's part of the things you're doing tonight is that you're going to have to reach out, more reach out to form the organization. Plus, you're trying to hire consultants. I have concern that you're trying to spend monies that would never prove by the TC for certain purposes. I caution you, I don't know whether hiring consultants that are never in the budget of what's at the TC is valid. Be careful. There are many people, many people in this town think I might be the devil, but other people think I'm a hero. Be cautious. And I'm very shocked that one of the members here is an amiable attorney of another municipality.
Can I wind it down, Mr. Feld?
Thank you.
You didn't have to stop on the dime. I was just asking you to wind it down. Well, I wasn't throwing you out. Don't, don't, don't get that wrong.
Chief Pastor, that 342 Hobart. My, my comments have sort of a theme about following the law and the New Jersey statutes, some similar to what Jeff is kind of repining about. I've spent a lot of time visiting with neighbors in Glenwood where I live, and I've heard very strong feedback about the ordinance that was just passed regarding the restaurants being given much more ease in entering into the business districts two through four. They're very against it. I've yet to meet one that was for what was happening. They feel that their private residences are being invaded upon, and they really don't like it at all. So I think that's something that this group should be aware of. For many people who came now Tuesday night, really did not express much disdain for what was happening. The other thing that I discovered is that there was a food safety license issued to a business just here on Upper Milburn Avenue that shouldn't have been done because they don't have the appropriate zoning permits. It was done either by the building department, zoning department, somebody, you know, gave this business the green light. And I think the business administrator who's sitting here with us tonight admitted at the May 4th meeting that that was the case, and that needed to be corrected. But now the trust has been eroded, the citizens, the residents are saying, hey, what's going on here? Why are some businesses getting in and not having to follow the rules? So I took it upon myself to talk to a couple of my friends that have businesses here. And I have to say, the three out of the three that I talked to are all counting their days. So while you guys are doing all this work to try and bring businesses, there are people that are really angry with what's going on. They've paid the price. They've come before the zoning board. They've gotten the boards, the planners, done what they had to do. And yet new businesses are coming in, everything's just being, you know, disregarded. I think that that's something that's not right. And I think you should ask those businesses and make it your business to find out why they're so upset and why they're planning to leave. They're making plans to exit Milburn. The other thing I guess I wanted to bring up was, I'm just tired of hearing and reading that the people are attending these free concerts. It's not free. I mean, we, the residents, are paying for this stuff, and I think that should be expressed. You know, I mean, we don't mind being part of this, but we should be acknowledged. And I think the community should know that we are funding the CID organization. We're not, I don't hear people saying they don't want to do it, but I do hear, you know, that they feel, where's this money coming from, et cetera. So I hope that we'll in the future acknowledge our contributions as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I address Ms. Pastorina? I just want to ask her the business names.
Sure, if it's for the business thing.
Would you provide me via email the names of those businesses? I'd be happy to reach out to them. The three businesses? Okay, if they're okay with it, I'd be more than happy to speak with them. Okay, thank you. Terrific. Thank you.
Nikki Powell, Shala, 358 C Milburn Avenue. Have to tell you, love the music. Everyone's enjoying it. I hear a lot from my customers. I hear a lot from the business owners where it's a great vibe. It's vivacious downtown. I would, I'm very happy to see that we're going to get earlier times. So the businesses that are open till 6 o'clock can take advantage of that, which is great. The weekends are hustling and bustling on it. It's nice to see. I think social media still needs a little bit more oomph, a little bit more promotion of the sidewalk sales would be nice. Not the reposting of other people, but maybe original content would be nice. Also, I was talking to a bunch of other merchants and trying to, you know, come up with some ideas. And we came up with like, maybe we can get the kids in town involved in maybe a TikTok campaign promoting all the districts and have like, pick the best one, and they can win a gift certificate to one of the businesses in town. I think especially now that we're going to be going maybe with the flex parking removal, that, you know, some positive and some more messaging out there would be very good for the downtown. Also, everyone's doing a great job. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, do we have anybody? Okay. Great. Welcome, Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Yeah. Apologies, I had it at seven. Yeah, sorry.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Harry Urso, 514 Milburn Avenue in Short Hills. I'd like to ask Mr. McDonald, how much does it cost the township or Explore Milburn to use Zoom? You're doing an injustice to a majority of the business owners that run their businesses past 6 o'clock PM. Fortunately, I cannot make the meetings, and you, if you like the township committee, get rid of Zoom, you're doing an injustice for people that cannot make it. And be honest with you, people are comfortable staying in, in their private homes, being on Zoom. Nextly, I'd like to commend Mrs. Lieberberg and Mr. Wasserman for not being the watchdog, being inclusive to the entire municipality and including all of the districts. As the woman from Shala spoke, loving the music, very vivacious downtown. So I'd like to thank you very much, and I commend you for not, as you promised, that you're there and you're going to be, you know, you're there to represent all of your districts, and you have failed to do that. So if Mr. McDonald can kindly let us all know what the Zoom would cost to keep the Zoom going. So people like myself, that I run a business 12 hours a day, I don't have the liberty to come down there and talk to all of you. I would highly recommend that you continue the Zoom so you can do and allow each and every person participate in your evening meetings. And just, I'd like to follow up with Mr. Feld, and I would like to put on the record that Mr. Parlevekio is a township attorney in another municipality, and he should be very well-known and aware of what Mr. Feld is talking about. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers on Zoom? Okay. So.
Hello, Nancy Stone, 266 Essex Street. I want to talk about the consultants that you're looking to hire. I find that amazing that these costs are not being approved by the TC, which is what the whole idea of the CID was, that you, they were going to be overseeing every move that this special improvement, or I should say illegal special improvement is. Steve, I am definitely one of the merchants that are not in favor of the CID, and I welcome you to make an appointment with me. My email is nancy@nancyanddavid.com. My cell phone is 917-587-4070, and I welcome you to message me. I'm open to a meeting with you at any time to discuss issues that I have with the CID. I will be absolutely non-confrontational and a conversation as to my issues with this organization and what was in the past for the 25 years that it was in existence. I don't have any ill feeling towards you. You're trying to do your job, but a conversation is certainly needed as a merchant in town for over 25 years, and certainly a business that has been successful without the CID. So I don't, I, I hope that I get to hear from you. On another matter, the agenda is just outrageous. I mean, I remember a time when we got the monies from the special improvement, and Alex released the funds, and Tara Prupus came marching into the office with David Sorkin, with the then-president, and asked for $10,000 for the Ed Foundation because we had gotten this money. And I, as the treasurer, was very protective of knowing the rules and the bylaws that you could not just give somebody money because they asked for it. There were certain budgetary items that could not be moved, and we had to say no. And I know that this pro, this organization has a problem saying no, but I don't see anything that this organization is doing differently than what the original one did. So, you know, we did Milburn Live, we had the music, it was paid for by the property owners. The residents are paying for this. It's not free. Nothing is free. These things cost money. And again, more than 50% of the budget is going towards administrative costs, which I have personal objection to, since the money should be, if at all, when this organization is deemed legal, should be going to the merchants and all the districts that you have extorted from. So with that said, I can't see the clock. I don't know how much time I have left, but I wish you well, and I look forward to hearing from you, Steve.
Thank you. And can we recognize that Richard Wasserman is here live in the flesh? If any other speakers, Alex on the hand. Okay. All right, so. Where are my Jackie glasses? And we will continue. Thank you, everyone who spoke. General updates, our first item, and this may answer some questions hopefully. I have an update on New Jersey Main Street program as well as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit application. So just to almost timeline it, because there's a lot of misinformation, disinformation. Hopefully, we could all be on the same page about this. So, starting in March of 2021, our organization, Explore Milburn Short Hills, submitted our Main Street, New Jersey, application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. The hope was at that time that the Main Street application was submitted, we would have our 501(c)(3) designation. That unfortunately didn't happen. The Main Street application requires that an entity be approved and approved 501(c)(3) nonprofit at the time of review. Therefore, we were denied, this is according to them, based on eligibility requirements. It's unfortunate. It's an unfortunate event of timing and nothing else. The argument or speculation that the denial of the Main Street application somehow reinforces an allegation that the CID is illegal is not correct. A CID is in no way required to be a designated Main Street, New Jersey participant, and not being included in the program has no bearing on the validity or the legality of the CID. Two things are not mutually exclusive, and they are totally unrelated. In fact, the Main Street program has existed since 1990. To my knowledge, the prior CID, which existed for 20 years or so, did not have a Main Street designation, and that fact didn't make it a legitimate organization. So to state that the denial of our application implies that DCA believes that the CID is illegal is a fabrication and untrue. Explore Milburn Short Hills has been invited by DCA to again apply in 2022 when we have our 501(c)(3) designation. We fully expect to do so at that time. As far as the 501(c)(3), it's taking a long time. There's no other way to, to explain it. In December of 2020, we submitted the 501(c)(3) application to the IRS. March 25th of 2021, the township committee approved the resolution to submit our Main Street application. March 30th, 2021, CID received a support letter from, for the Main Street application from Assembly members McKean and J.C. On March 31st, CID submitted the Main Street application to DCA. March 3rd, CID received a letter from DCA requesting two additional required documents be submitted. May 3rd, I'm sorry, May 4th, township committee approves the 2021 CID budget at their meeting. May 10th, CID provided the two additional required documents that were requested to the DCA. May 18th, 2021, CID received notification that Main Street application is denied due to not having a 501(c)(3). And at this time, we still await final approval for the nonprofit designation. So that's where we are on that. I don't know how to expedite a program other than what we've done to reach out to some of our federal representatives. I do know things like passports and other federal documents are taking forever, so that's where we are. There's nothing else. I don't think we need to say on that at this point. More with general updates, township committee updates, committee man Wasserman.
Thank you so much, Michael. First of all, I apologize I'm late. The, the, the traffic has been insane, but I digress. Commuting is bad. It's back to where it used to be. So whatever that says. So a couple of updates. The township has passed a zoning ordinance update, and on the second reading, we passed it at the last meeting. And it basically, I mean, it does a lot of different things, but I guess there's, it will now, there's going to be a lot more permitted uses for vacant, you know, for vacant spaces. And there's a host of upgrades, and a lot of residents, you know, a lot of residents had concerns, you know, which, 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 you know, were expressed. And, but, but it was a major update to our zoning. And I think, and I do think that that's going to help low, you know, continue to lower our vacancy rate. Steve, do you want me to also talk, to talk about this or micro, you know, some of the micro advance at this point? Yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask the districts that that, the new zoning ordinance or the proposed zoning ordinance affects? We're just.
Well, well, the, the residents, you know, most, you know, a lot of residents came out that, that were abutting Morris Avenue. It's, and it's district.
The highway district.
Yeah, highway district as well as District 3. So it's 3 and 2, but basically, a lot of residents that are abutting Morris Avenue were concerned about, you know, restaurants coming in, filtration issues, noise issues, 125-foot setback issues. And, and, you know, and the, the ordinance does provide, you know, it does provide, you know, quite a bit of protection, you know, for residents. It was discussed, it was laid out at committee, and it did pass, it did pass unanimously. And, but there were concerns that we heard. I did speak to quite a few residents about it. And, you know, and, but I do think it'll be in the interest of the township.
Thank you. Is that it?
Well, like, oh, well, it was said, one, one person did recuse, but four people did vote for it. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, Finance Committee report, Stephen.
Sure. Thanks, Michael. This month, Steve and I created a new report, which we hope provides some even more transparency than what we've been doing in the past. We have tweaked it since what was originally posted. So the newest one is now online, and copies are, it was online yesterday, excellent, and copies are available here as well. And everyone on the board here has the most current version. All the information here is as of May, May 31. Just to start off, our bank balances, as of May 31, it was approximately $23,130. But on June 3rd, I deposited $154,000 received from the township. So the balance as of yesterday was approximately $164,000. So that, that represents the remaining payment for the budget for this year. So that's, don't expect any additional deposits into the account. As you can see, this master balance, it is very, very similar to what the buckets and categories of expenses had, had been reviewed and discussed. The, I'll just point out the projected column, that's what varies over time, right? So that projected number is our best estimate. As we move through the year, as we get invoices, as projects and, and programming is solidified, we'll have a better picture of that. So that's why you'll see at the very bottom, the current projection, we're about $2,900 over budget right now. But that's only because the projections are not yet, are, a lot, a lot of them are our best guess, and we know that we can cut back in many places. Obviously, we're not going over the total budget. Steve, do you have anything else? I mean, I know we discussed that, but I think I could walk through some of the new items as well, but.
Unless the, the committee or the board has any questions, no, I think you did wonderfully.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Sorry, I was.
No, I think you did wonderfully. It was great. Unless anyone has specific questions.
Yeah, I mean, and I can point out a few new items here just for everybody to take a look. There's an intern line under staffing, and I believe the idea was we, we've projected $1,500 expense for an intern, which I believe has been posted. I know my daughter came and said, hey, she noticed it. I don't know where she found it, but she noticed that we were looking for an intern. How many? Wow, that's great. The, I'll just point out the accountant and auditor line. What was in our budget was $4,500 originally, but we did receive an invoice actually related to the application for the nonprofit status. So we paid that, and that's why the projected for that line item is over the approved amount. But again, this is going to be all, have to be rebalanced a bit as we move throughout the year. The other item is this new other category, and I know on the agenda tonight is, say, for example, the curb efficiency study. You know, if the board approves it, that's what the projected expense would be. We just threw it on here now. You know, of course, if it's not approved, it would be removed for this month. Also, meals and travel, we put $500 in there mainly for Steve to make sure he complies with our conflicts policy, right? So he go, may go out to lunch with others. We, we want him to be able to pay for himself and not have others buy him lunch. And so I, I do, I think 500 may even be too much, right? As we discussed, I think, I think it will come under that amount. Lastly, that board trading item, which again, another agenda item tonight, I believe will be. Lastly, that board trading item, which again, another agenda item tonight, I believe will be discussed, but that's the board training, which is projected, if everyone agrees, it's, I think, $3,500.
And just as a note, I met with Alex and the tax assessor last week and we talked about the budget process for 2022. We work on a calendar year. And so in October, we will present a draft budget to this board. In November, we will present a final budget for a vote. And then it'll be brought to the town council or town committee, I should say, for final approval and then the process will begin of the assessment. So obviously, you you folks put this budget together without the experience of actually running a year's worth of a bit. Now that we have real numbers, the the 2022 budget will be much more detailed than the 2021 one was. And as you could see, this is even more detailed than what we originally had put together. Now it's line itemed. And if you see that second page, at the end of every month, Stephen and I reconcile every expense, whether that's the debit card or the credit or the checks. And so each expense is then put into a line item category in that final column. And so then we know exactly what we spent per line item so that we can better project in 2022.
I I just have a question.
Sure.
I'm a lawyer, so by rule, that makes me poor at math. When I go down the difference column and I meet at the last row on grand total and we have a red number. So I do know colors if I don't know numbers. When I see the red number, the 22899 as a difference, I know that means it's difference to the negative. So this is, this doesn't mean that we're going to exceed our budget.
Well, this this shows that we are running $2,900 approximately above budget. However, we know that these projected numbers are going to be pushed downward. And and this was just as a snapshot as May 31. So for example, tech and IT support, we'd approved in the budget $2,000, but we don't, we're now projecting 500. We picked up $1,500 there. So as we move throughout, we're going to definitely take steps. We will not exceed. That will be zero.
Right. So right. We have to, we're in a, we're in a constant state of balance.
It is a moving target. So for instance, with staffing, you see your projected for your executive director is higher than you projected. However, in working with our marketing consultant, she's, for instance, taking time off during the summer for vacation. She won't be paid. So you had budgeted for 52 weeks at 25 hours. That was the full number of 35,750. She's not going to work that. And so we were able to decrease that line item. So that's why you see a decrease there. But then on the projected side, for instance, holiday and seasonal events. Thus far, we've spent $3,800. We had budgeted, or you had budgeted before I came, $29,000. Minus a spending spree, we are not going to spend $29,000. And so again, you know, this was a year one budget, just like any other business, it's it's estimates. So no, I'm not concerned about this number. This number will, we will be under budget.
That's what I wanted to know. I just.
I wanted to just provide some specific examples as we go. But yes, it's a moving target. We've put in place, I think, a very responsible financial policy where Stephen and I do reconcile this every month. And we will know exactly if there are trouble items to be able to take care of it.
Stephen, Stephen, I was fully confident that we will come in at or below budget. I just, when we have a document that has red numbers with parentheses around it, I want to make sure that is.
And and just as something else that I think the whole board needs to be aware of, and I believe some of you are aware of, is we will not receive another payment into the Cid account until the end of the first quarter of 2022. So everything that we have in the bank now is what we will have in the bank minus grants, donations, et cetera. So I am currently planning and Stephen and I will meet on this. Really, it's a 15-month budget. It's all of 2021 plus the first quarter of 2022. So that I ensure that we have operating money for that first quarter. Then in April, when we get our payment, we'll be fine again. But it's my responsibility as the ED to make sure that we cover that extra three-month period. And I I'm confident that we will.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Make one comment? Yeah, I think it would be good to put some type of note on here to say that in total, the budget is going to be managed, you know, to ensure it's within the projected. But just more of a process question. There are these kind of big macro categories, the staffing, marketing, general operating, et cetera. What is required in terms of the ordinance? In terms of to what extent money can be? And now there's a new category, other that you said hadn't existed before. Is there discretion within the Cid Board to move and shift funds across different categories as long as the total is within the approved? Or what would what would require something to have to go back for Township Committee review? That's my question. I'm not sure who knows the answer to that.
So I'll have to look at the the ordinance. Typically, it's not unusual at all to move money between accounts. Both at the municipal level. Most municipalities do, I'm sure. Thank you. I'm sure your CFO, as you move through the year, does that you will budget a certain amount for professional fees and that will come in remarkably under or remarkably over budget as events unfold during the course of the year. Salaries, people leave jobs, people come onboard. Those are hard to predict. And so typically, you'll you'll reconcile and adjust those accounts towards the end of the year. I have not, I'll have to take a look to see whether there's any any other restrictions that are unusual.
Yeah, it makes full business sense. It's just more a question of what is or does or doesn't require your approval. So thank you.
Typically, you should, you should, the the budget is a macro bottom line.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Any other questions on the Finance Committee report? If not, we'll move on. Planning and updates, events update, start with Jackie Betsman-Lieberberg. You have the first two items.
Well, thank you very much. As you can see, attached is the Explore Milburn Short Hills music schedule. We've already began events that started back in May that are not on the schedule, but this is what I'll call the schedule going forward from now through Labor Day. Happy to report that Friday, August 6, the poet section will be performing, which is a new update to the to the schedule. Please also note that we have music at the boxcar location, the Main Street closure location, the gazebo area around Taylor Park. So that we are moving this around and we, on the May 8th fame event, we had music that was also in Lot 1. So we are very cognizant of the fact that what we promised was to go beyond the downtown area. And from all reports I've received, it's very popular. Our residents are engaged. There are people coming into Milburn from other towns that are enjoying our music program. The words that keep coming back to me are it's it's created such a great vibe. So I'm 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 very happy and I I think I would share the that the other members of the board would share my enthusiasm as well as our merchants for the music program. I can only see one direction that this is going and that's up for more engagement, more participation. I know that I keep getting phone calls, you know, when can we come to Milburn to perform? So I'm very grateful that the that the music calendar is is full and robust and that it's you know, it's what makes us unique and what's special. And now we're offering it Friday as well as other afternoons, evenings on the weekends. So it's it's really, the program has expanded in a relatively short period of time. And thank you to Steve and Marla for for their their effort to keep it, keep it moving and keep it moving along. Speaking of moving and moving along, Paper Mill is coming back. And in conjunction with the Cultural Engagement, Diversity and Arts Committee, we will have be, Township will be hosting a paper mill in the park. And that is going to be on Sunday, June 27th, from 1:00 to 2:30. It's going to be a terrific afternoon entertainment for your whole family. So please mark your calendars. There'll be events for kids and there'll be an improv lineup and there will be performances by Paper Mill alum. So once again, that is Sunday, June 27th, rain date of July 25th. And that's 1:00 PM to 2:30 in Taylor Park. Just also incidentally, while we're on the topic of Taylor Park, the the Seda art installation altogether now is well underway. There are some pictures on Facebook that will merit the and will demonstrate the the progress of the installation and we're hoping to wrap that up by the end of the month. So it's very exciting, art in the park. All all part of our our community engagement and participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Juma, okay. Jumana is ceding her time to Mr. Grillo. Morris Turnpike Merchant Mixer.
Okay, so pinching for Jumana here. The first of our series of merchant mixers will be on June 29th from 4:30 to 6:00. We will be rotating these throughout the five districts over the next six months. I think we're going to take July off, but then we'll be back at it in August. This is a great way for businesses to meet each other, understand what they're doing. You know, one of the challenges, especially outside of the downtown, is that it's not a very walkable building typography, right? We have strip malls, especially on Morris Turnpike. And it's funny, I was telling someone, we were filming a commercial with her and she said, yeah, I really want to come to this event. Where is it? And I told her and she said, is that nearby? I said, it's the next store. She said, oh, I didn't know. I don't, I just get in my car. I come in my store and I leave. And I said, well, that is one of the critical problems with mass suburbanization of the 1960s, but I'll leave that planning lecture for later. But I said, this is the point. And it's funny that the two businesses that we're going to be hosting this, Evolve Med Spa and Icebox Studio, are actually very similar businesses to this woman I was speaking with. Great opportunity for them to have collaborative marketing, share customers because they're in the same industry. And so that's one of the the points that we're trying to do here is just connect faces to names, especially Alex and I have been talking, you know, so many businesses in this community have been open for a year, 18 months. I keep meeting them and they just don't know who their neighbors are. And so this is a really good opportunity and this will be open only to businesses that are located on Morris Turnpike. We will then be rotating throughout the months at each different location. And then we're also just, I don't want to be remiss, we are getting donations from the Wine Rack on Essex Street and Milburn Deli will be providing food. So thank you to them for supporting our community. And if anybody is listening, I don't think they are. You can RSVP if you are a business on Morris Turnpike to my email address.
Thanks, Steve. Next, we have, I think you're on this one, along with Alex, Milburn Sidewalk Sales and Musician Recruitment.
Alex, do you just want to remind everybody about the sidewalk sale policy and then?
Yeah, just want to remind everybody that we do have sidewalk sales going on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the months of June, August, or June, July and August. We just want to remind merchants that obviously the time for sidewalk sales and putting racks out are June, June, July and August and on the weekends. But more so, just want to have everybody participating in that. The more I think that does get put out and that does, you know, continue, it's just another way of driving buzz and and excitement about what's going on.
And we are also working to recruit local amateur musicians to play throughout the downtown district especially. Because we obviously have our professional musicians, more formal musicians for the the concerts. But good opportunity for locals, especially individuals and duos. This Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, the Main Street closure will be our first try at that. We have three different local amateur musicians, but we've got high school students that are going to be playing throughout the summer. It's it's a really fun way to integrate a new cohort of the musical community. Ms. Powell mentioned improving the marketing. Couldn't agree more. I'm going to have Marla reach out to you and try to coordinate on something, but you've been a staunch advocate of this and we need all the help we can get, I think, to to market this particular program because it is a really unique and positive one. And so we'd love to to work together on it. Thank you. And then it's me again.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is a perfect segue into our next segment, Marketing Branding and Place Making Update.
Yes, so we we have met, all of our committees have met during the first six weeks of my tenure. We do have a marketing branding and we we added placemaking because placemaking was part of it, but not in the title. So we formalized that a little bit, but I want to do spend some time on the five platforms that we have for different use. So we do have an Instagram page. We've been typically using that for daily updates, business promotion, general outreach. That's where we get most of our back and forth communication. LinkedIn, we launched two weeks ago. We have 80 followers now. We're also following a number of other business groups, bids and Cids throughout the region. And so that we're going to be using more for business information, information about grants, special programs from EDA or SBA, et cetera. Try to keep that a little bit more form, a little bit more business. Then we have the email blasts. And so we've formalized that as well. We've created something called the Weekend Warm Up. And that's our community newsletter that goes out on Thursday evenings. And we've had our fourth one just went out this evening. We also have Facebook. We use that. We were pivoting a little bit, trying to use that more for events and kind of larger draws. We're not, we're trying not to have as much back and forth communication on that platform, really shifted more to Instagram and use the Facebook for some of our larger events. We also set up calendar events so that people, when they sign up, they do get a reminder that that event is occurring. And then YouTube, we do have a YouTube channel. We don't have any content, but we will because we've been filming commercials. And so in July, we will launch our YouTube channel in earnest and we will have material to put on it. So those are our five platforms. As I, and as I said, we've really tried to refine them over the last couple of weeks. Just some stats briefly. I think they're very interesting. So comparing May 17th to June 15th versus April 17th to May 16th, right? So this is the last month. On Instagram, we've reached 2,900 accounts, which is up 120% from the month prior. We've, you don't have to write these down. I'll give you the paper. It's a lot. We've had 827 profile visits, which is up 62%. Our total followers have gone up 9.2% to 937. Our content interactions have gone up. We've had over 1,000, 1,024. That's up 8%. 730 followers. And I think more interesting, 21, actually, 2,199 non-followers. So those are people that are just coming across our profile, don't follow us, but they're seeing us through shares and reels and things like that. So that's a big number. We've also had 31 posts, 88 stories and two reels. The reels are the bands playing live, which has been really popular. Our impressions, so this is really kind of how many times our our information has gotten out there. 24,136 times over the last month, which is up 72.3%. And I just thought this was interesting. 36% of our followers are in Milburn Short Hills. So only a third, two-thirds are in the region. We have a lot of Springfield, Maplewood. But 66% are between the ages of 35 and 54 and 75% are women. Which I thought is interestingly skewed, but three quarters of our people are women. On LinkedIn, we launched on May 21st. We now have 80 followers. Our overall engagement rate is 6.6%. So that's people who are actually spending time and clicking on our stories. 6.6% is considered high as the average across the LinkedIn network is 2%. So we've tripled that. And then our post engagement, we've had 20 posts, our engagement is 20%, which is also extremely high. And then our email blast, Tracy had asked for some 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 numbers on that. We have an average open rate of 35% on the weekend warm-up, which is very, very high. But and then, of course, as you get to the click, it goes down lower, but 35% of people on the list are receiving an opening. Then in terms of, and I I thought this was very interesting, in all three that we've been able to to report on, 74%, 45% and 77% total clicks were for live music. I think just reinforcing that live music is the most popular thing going on right now. And that is where we're getting an enormous amount of clicks in terms of our data analysis. So I'm sure I have bored you with that, but I think those are all very impressive numbers. And Marla is doing a great job of supporting us on that. Speaking of additional marketing, the Meet the Merchants commercial campaign is something that we've been working on the last two weeks. We are, so what we do is we contact businesses and tell them we're going to give them a 60-second commercial. We go in and we do kind of a Steadicam type thing. You guys remember Goodfellas, when he goes into the Copacabana? They follow him around. It's kind of the same concept. And so we've had 10 of those films so far. All the business owners have just been thrilled. They're a little, they got some stage fright in the beginning, but the average is five takes, which I think is pretty good. And so you didn't do it in she had a lot of prep. But she was our first. Shalas was our, was our kickoff. But she was our first, Shalas was our was our kickoff. So we've done ten of them, we have a couple more scheduled, and that will be our campaign for July. As I said, we've begun scheduling out all of our social media campaigns through twenty twenty two. And so July this year will be releasing these on our YouTube channel, we'll release them via email blast. And then, of course, the businesses will have the ability to share it themselves. They can share it on their social media, their websites, just send it to their friends and family. Vicky's mom wants a copy, so I think it's it's a great way to put a face to a business. We are trying to be very equitable. We're kind of limiting ourselves at five to six per district. And I just put out an email blast today and social media this week, that we are looking for more folks in Wyoming, Upper Milburn, and Morris Turnpike, I'm sorry, Short Hill Station. So we do want to get five per district, end up at about twenty five. Okay?
That's great.
Great.
My last item, and I could take a break. Everyone has a coaster on your desks. We ordered branded coasters, so that's our logo with our social media tags. That will be distributed to all the food and beverage establishments in town, so that when you are sitting down for dinner or lunch, and you have a drink, you will have a coaster with our logo on it. Hopefully, that will drive up some more traction on our social media page, as well as create more brand awareness. So very excited about that, and we will start distributing that over the next few days.
Terrific. Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I skipped over. So we actually have a Meet the Merchants promo. These are going to be edited. We're going to clean up a little bit of the sound and and things, but you will see. Icebox. Yeah, so we went to Icebox and did this one. It's a new business. You'll all see it in July. With that, I will pass it over to two of our board members who are doing.
Hi, I'm Steve Grillo, Executive Director of Explore Milburn Short Hills, the special improvement district for Milburn and Short Hills, and I'm thrilled today to be at one of our newest businesses, Icebox Studios, here at eight hundred Morris Turnpike. Let's check it out.
Welcome to Icebox Short Hills. Here at Icebox, we specialize in a three-minute innovative cold therapy treatment. It works for athletic recovery, pain management, and has a whole host of wellness and beauty benefits. Here's one of our treatment rooms. We do most of our localized treatments in here, really great for athletes. If you're having any pain problem areas, we'd love to help you out with that. One of our other enhancers that we have is our compression area, really great for helping with circulation, breaking up lactic acid, and a whole host of other things. We have are running a current promotion called our First Freeze Free, so if you want to try the Icebox, it's on us for your first time. We are on Instagram at Icebox Cryotherapy, or sorry, Icebox underscore Short Hills, and we also have a Facebook page at Icebox Cryotherapy Short Hills. Thank you so much to Explore Milburn for letting us participate. We're so excited to work with you guys and for supporting us. We're so excited to support you. And yeah, thanks so much.
That's great.
Great.
Yeah, that's great. Can I just ask, you're going to run this campaign in July. Why are we limiting ourselves to just doing a one-off in July? Because I think it's great.
Oh, no, 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 we're just going to release, and that'll be the kickoff, and then as we film them, I will continue to do.
Yeah, I think it's great.
We're just going to roll out all, hopefully, you know, at this point, we can film probably fifteen or twenty by then. So we'll roll those all out, and then we'll just continue to film.
Okay, because it's brilliant. It's very good.
Thank you.
That's terrific.
Can I ask a question to the chair? So Steve, who is entitled to ask for one of these? Any of the merchants in our township?
If you're in the S I D, you can have a video.
You have a video, and how do they contact you?
Email me, steve@exploremilburnshorthills.org. People reach out to us on our Instagram, our Facebook. So however you want to get to us, we've got plenty of resources, and we'll come and film it.
Terrific. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Website development update. We all are here with bated breath for Tracy.
Okay, I'll I'll just talk to it for a moment and then show it to you real quickly after. So just as some background on the website, you may recall, in the past meetings, we had an RFP with a vision of developing the website, we selected our local resource to do that. And it is now almost ready to launch, so it's been quite a bit of work. The goal is to really be the gateway to the business districts of all of Explore Milburn Short Hills, and to showcase everything we have to offer, dining, shopping, entertainment, professional services, health. And to your point earlier, Steve, and that's so interesting about the social media, it's geared to both residents and visitors to make us an exciting destination. And I have to say, I myself, I've lived here for more than twenty five years. Wow, old. I was learning about places and actually businesses that I didn't know existed. So I'm really excited about this, because if you need something, you are now going to have a place to go to and see, can I, you know, I also being on this committee, I know I'm so much more cognizant of trying to keep like my money and our family's spending in town. So I am very excited for this. I want to say before we give a quick preview, this is still a work in progress. It's ninety percent there, but it's okay, ninety five percent there, but it's not launched publicly yet. So I want to mention that, and also it's going to continue to evolve. We already have a list of phase two enhancements that we want to add, so I certainly welcome anybody's suggestions on things. I want to say thank you to New Frontier for their excellent work on the website. A thank you to Jumana and Diana. You'll see that the design work that began with our logo really is expanded in use on the website. Marla and Jamie worked really hard on the database, which is the source of the directory here. Again, that will continue to evolve. And then Tim Hubbell, a volunteer in our marketing committee, has been coordinating with volunteer photographers who really very beautifully and with very different styles capture our town from close up to drone images. So Ravne Chada is a photographer who's taken some beautiful shots. Arlene Pomerantz, a longtime resident who has amazing photos, has enabled us to leverage those photos. Jamie Ryan and Herb Brian Smith. So I, Alex, can I come over for a moment to just give a little mini? You guys want to see the?
Any questions?
This will be pretty quick. Can you guys hear me?
Okay.
All right, so I just wanted to reload. So this is our homepage, and hopefully that's gonna load. Yep. So you'll see the hero images throughout the site. Excuse me, we're really showcasing all of the five districts, so that starts right here on the homepage. So you'll see that. Not so great with these. Tracking. There's a search function here, but I'll talk about search in a minute with a perfect place for visitors and residents. We have four main sections highlighted. Really not effective on the tracking. It's okay. You'll see, color from mural, make a day of it, and then we will have featured events on our homepage. Right now, we're highlighting, as we were talking about, music is a big highlight. This is a live feed from our Instagram account. Steve was talking about Instagram being key, so this is actually a live feed, links to our social media. Then in our About section, so you'll see the elements of our logo kind of on all of these pages. This shows a bit about Milburn Short Hills overall, about Explore Milburn Short Hills, what we're all about, and then the five districts, so a little map here and an outline of the five very unique districts of our area. I'm not going to go through every page, that'll take too long. We then have a leadership page, which talks about the professional staff, the members of the board, board updates with all our meeting dates, all of that, news, and how people can get involved. Explore, so this is a big heart of the website, is our business directory or our explore section. So this is a great destination where people will be able to come, and they could easily search if they're looking to go to a certain part of town, or they're looking for, oh, thank you. I think I'm doing okay, but okay. Okay, okay, I will let you touch. That's great. Thank you.
No, no, you speak? Yeah.
Are you director of technology also?
Okay, that is a lot easier. Okay, so for example, here, we could do a search on the five districts. We want to see what's everything in the Short Hill Station District, and we can plug that in. See all the businesses there, or we could reset and.
Those are links to the websites of each business.
Yes, and then let's say, oh, what kind of art art resources are there here in town? I could hit art and see all the different art-related resources in town. Those are just some examples, or of course, we all want to dine, go out to dinner, you know, where can I get some really great Asian cuisine, for example? Yeah, come up. And yeah, so then each of these, and again, still a work in progress, so this all has the name of the business, their website. This will link to directions. And also, you could even just peruse and see what all these different businesses are all about. So this is going to be great, and again, that'll keep expanding, so that's the explore section. In Events, we have the live music lineup, we have a whole section for that. So you can see, we have the whole schedule here. We will also have, this is part of the five percent that's still in progress, we will also have an events calendar, where we'll be highlighting all of the individual events. And then also, a very important section is for prospective businesses, so why Milburn Short Hills? We talk about why open your business here, why do business here? We have the Business Success Kit, which I think Steve is going to talk about a little bit later, so that can be easily downloaded from the site here, as you can see. Success Kit up, so the whole the whole document is here. And then the Opening Soon section, where we highlight businesses that are coming soon and recent openings. And then an easy way to contact us, where we have our contacts information and a way for people to sign up. Have to check that. Oh, here it is, just took a moment to look. So people can sign up right here for our newsletter. If they're a merchant, we'll ask them what their business name is, if they're a community member, et cetera. So that will be our gateway that we'll be now able to promote and link to from many places. And any questions? Okay. Well, we, I know our interns and staff have done a lot of due diligence on the database, but obviously it keeps evolving. We even include, I'm here if anybody has updates to let us know. So and yes, I mean, they basically just, we even say, I'm here, we give our contact information. So if there's a new business or someone's info is not correct, they could just reach out right here, info@exploremilburnshorthills.org. So we will be continually updating this. And then
Tracy, another quick, yeah, I'm just wondering, the other way, if so, businesses have their own website, if they get our logo, Explore Milburn Short Hills, click and it takes them to this website. Yeah, I don't know if that was part of the plan, but it seems like we would put, so like Spurge Bakery's website, I could put up this on our website.
Nice idea. Right, want to learn more about our town or our community? Yeah, that's a really nice idea. Yeah, I love that.
But we'd have to probably distribute the logo to, you know, electronic version.
And what is that it has a QR code, right? Eventually, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's a really nice idea. It's a great idea.
Can I ask, you know, obviously, the directory and coming soon and all that is going to be, need to be updated regularly. Who's going to do that physically?
Yeah, so Steve, Marla, and myself will be able to do, you know, the ongoing updates. Obviously, we want to do like, I mean, the nice thing is, it's a WordPress site. I mean, I manage a WordPress site at work. It's very user friendly. So content, you know, we get a new merchant, we're going to be able, I mean, Stephen Marla could input the new.
That was my question.
And set that up. It's modular. It's like plug and play. If we need a whole new functionality, that's another story, but updating the images or you know, updating a copy, we can maintain that ourselves. Once the framework is developed, and I say, there's a few more little tweaks going on, but I say, I sent the link to everyone, I encourage everyone.
Yes.
And I also sent it to a couple, Vicky, you you have the website, and a couple of folks on our marketing committee, I've sent it to, just because I also am so close to it, so it's good to have someone like that, because Steve has been helping a lot. So definitely, everyone, if you could try it out in the next couple of days. But yes, we'll be able to do updates. I say, Stephen Marla can do updates, I can do some updates.
And when do we launch it?
I would say we could probably launch Monday, once everybody just gives it a once over. I know there is a mobile compatibility that they're finishing.
Yeah, I think the things we have to just double check with the agency are the events module, we're trying to find the exact right element for that.
There's a plugin problem that they're working on. But as you can see, I mean, it's a functioning website.
Yeah.
There's just a couple of things that I don't want to run on.
Yeah.
But I think in the next, you know, three, four days, we should be ready.
That's our hope, but we do want to make sure the mobile is ready, because we know that many, many people are accessing accessing their information mobile. Okay.
Another one more quick question, sorry. Considered, and I don't know if we need any terms and conditions, privacy policy.
Yes, thank you to our legal counsel. Sorry, I took off the screen chair, but let me sit back.
Thank you.
Yeah, so at the bottom, and thank you, and our legal counsel has reviewed the entire site. But yeah, so at the bottom here, absolutely, we have our privacy policy, Terms of Use is here.
So the, I mean, I would, the copyright symbol, though, that's not our corporate name. I would just question whether you have to put the real corporate entity to get the copyright rights at the bottom instead of our Explore Milburn tag. Yeah, it's just a question.
You can. In fact, you can copyright both their name and copyright. Anything that's copyrighted, so it doesn't have to be your official corporate name, so I'll take another look.
Okay, yeah, just.
Yeah, thanks for the quick review.
And that's why we're not launching immediately. There are there are little tiny things like this, but I think Tracy has burned the candle at both ends, burned the midnight oil, whatever you want to say. She has put, at this point, hundreds of hours into this, and and I think her effort really deserves to be recognized.
Tracy, I just want to applaud you also for helping the business community and the township. I just want to echo what Steve was saying. I saw how many hours and hours you put in on behalf of our merchants, and and the township really appreciates it.
All right, thank you, and thank you to everybody who's been helping. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Our next item, Gifty Gift Card Program.
So we met Stephen, Steve, I was on. And the CEO of Gifty to discuss some legal their contract, and I know there's a few things that you guys wanted to review with them, and I think that's in the works. I don't have any update on that, but provided that we are able to iron all these, we were thinking of maybe launching kind of a, create a pilot, but it's not really a pilot, where we would say, purchase A thousand dollars worth of Yifty cards we explore. And use them as prizes or giveaway within the community and see what the response is. So it would be basically allocating part of our budget, like part of our marketing budget to doing this once we're able to launch.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I learned, and that was a great call we had, because she really answered a lot of questions. One is that those cards are only as good as the businesses who sign up to, to accept them. So there is a process, I think, where businesses will have to. Literally, well, yeah, literally like send an email or something so they can connect your point of sale system to accept the gift card. And, and then they're in that process, there's some, and that's what we're reviewing, our terms and conditions that are, that the merchants are subject to. Once they agree to accept these gift cards. So there is, I mean, it, it was a great presentation. I mean, I thought that was a very helpful conversation. That's what we're reviewing is, is just to make sure there's no.
Yeah, and we should take the time to make it right. Absolutely. I, I know that last time we talked about it a couple of meetings ago. I had informally talked to 13 merchants, I think the number was, not excluding any of the merchants that are sitting on this committee. And, and everybody was. From, from, you know, happy to really enthusiastic about the idea, not to say that they would sign up, but there, there was kind of an enthusiasm about this idea. So I, I'm hoping that if we were to launch this, we would not have to, an issue with getting people to buy it, but.
I, I think there's also a really nice aspect to this, that the, the metrics are trackable for us. So we'll be able to know who spends what where. We'll also know if these cards go unused. So that's a question. We give away a $50 gift card and it never gets spent. And if 70% of the cards never get used, then we know that this is a program we probably don't want to continue doing. I would suggest, as Nadej said, probably a six month period where we just see what is the functionality? Do people use it? We have the money in our budget to, to spend a thousand dollars on purchasing this. I think it's a great way to promote during our summer and fall events. I, I don't know in terms of a process here. Maybe this is a question really for Stephen, since you've been looking through the contract. We could authorize at this point to proceed or giving me permission to engage. In the contract with them, assuming that you have no legal issues. So we don't have to necessarily wait till our next board meeting.
Yeah, we, we did have legal, proposed legal changes to that document. That was the agreement between us. There's some, there's a lot of agreements.
Would you prefer to wait until the next meeting to take action?
I think so, because, yeah, she isn't, they haven't seen our comments yet on that document.
So then, so then I'll just keep that on the agenda for next meeting and hopefully we have a resolution at that point. But I think the system works really well. And I thought the call that Nadej organized was, was really excellent. Yes, in the aggregate, we will know if, if a card was used somewhere. We won't know who bought what. We will just know that $50 was spent at ABC store.
Can I just say, I mean, I can, I think it's great. I mean, again, it's that mission to keep money in the community. I mean, I know obviously we're not going to make it for this year, but even things like teacher gifts. And I, I see people asking out there, is there some type of town gift certificate? And so we'll be able to say yes. And. What was I gonna say? I mean, also, as we know, I'm sure the number is even higher now, but we, we had, when we put a chart together a while ago. I think more than 75 businesses that have participated in events hosted by the CID. And so I think those would be a great initial group of businesses to go to. And we even know how many events they participated in. And so.
You know, what prompted me to, I think, really legitimately think about this was we had a, a request from, I forget which, which not for profit. But they'd asked us to contribute a gift towards one of their golf outings. We didn't have anything to give them. You know, we've got shirts, we've got things like that, but we don't have anything really for that type of community event. Having one of these cards, we could say, sure, take a $50 gift card and go spend it in Milburn. You know, go, so you're a local community group, go spend it in community businesses. So I think it's just a great way to get more activity on the streets and more activity for our businesses. It's certainly worth piloting.
Yeah, and, and I think that the interesting thing that she was reinforcing as well is that it's about the extra revenue. People who buy those cards are in bulk, are, are companies that would normally go to, you know, Amazon or online retailer. So it's dollar that is not going to our town, right? That would be redirected to the town.
And one thing to add, right, we mentioned the pilot program, right? So the CID would spend money to distribute these cards, but we're not the only group, right? So then individuals could buy the gift card, just like any other gift card. This is really just to get the word out, you know, to spread, spread the information about it. Hopefully that will germinate out into the community and people will buy them on their own as well. So this is not a, a long-term financial commitment for us either.
Well, the possibility, the possibilities are endless, I mean, whether it be Little League or teacher gifts or PTOs or any, yeah. I mean, we're all aware of. What it could be.
And we know that other towns use this successfully.
Yes.
You know, and we have great references.
Did she send you the reference? And just that reminded me, I think we asked her for some towns in.
Nadej had done some discussion.
To, and I sent Steve the, the report that I did, then, yeah.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move on to the Parklet Grant Program, Richard.
Thank you. Well, we have 10,000, we, in our budget, we have $10,000 set aside under the title of COVID Grant Program. Steve and I have been working together. On. An idea of. Allowing. Small grants to restaurants for parklets. And, and I guess the question for us is, you know, is, do we, do we want to, you know, do we want to just target, you know, restaurants to. Give them grants for parklets or, or, you know, there's only $10,000 there. So, you know, there's a limited amount of money. The question is, is, you know, is that the, you know, is that the limitation? I mean, you know, because there are other, other categories, there are other merchants also. But I, you know, certainly there are, the restaurants could use it because when you build a parklet, it's expensive. The town basically is responsible for blocking off the parklet, but in terms of building it, it's really on the, on the restaurant.
Can I ask a question in terms of, and I, I think I emailed you about this question recently. I guess I'm open to the parklet idea. I guess one question is, could there be a use for a parklet in some place other than a restaurant per se, like by Haagen Dazs, you know, for ice cream or?
Any food is that.
But I guess that counts as a restaurant. I guess my other question is, I feel like I've noticed. Just a bunch of businesses looking shabbier during this time. Like I think they just don't have money like to clean. Their awnings, you know, I, I happen to notice it also because I've been looking at all these photos for the website. And I'm looking at these photos from a couple of years ago. And then I'm looking at the photos now and just even the awnings, I, I just think people are so stressed for money. So I guess I'm, I don't know if that's something completely separate or. Is there something, could there be grants that are somehow a little broader? I don't know. I guess I just wanted to raise that question.
So, so cleaning, so facade improvements, right? Let's just call it that under the umbrella, right? That could be cleaning awnings, cleaning windows, you know, giving people money to just beautify their space a little bit more.
Refresh.
Yeah, like a refresh. It is very, very expensive when a street puts, when a, when a, when a town puts that kind of money out on the street. Richard and I had a conversation with a committee member of INIAC as well about, and I think this is more of a council or a town committee. Making the move on this, but access to capital and micro grants is something that the CID community is doing a lot of now. $500, you know, $1,000, just to do exactly what you're talking about. Give a business the ability to go and hire a contractor to clean up, but it doesn't have to come out of their own pocket. I'm a firm believer from the economic development perspective of putting capital out on the street and having an entity like the CID manage that. We would have to be allocated the money, right? It shouldn't come out of our budget, which is already fairly low. But I think to your point, if those are quality of life concerns, but there needs to be a facilitator of that and a marketer of that. I think the CID would be a great entity and I would implore the town committee to potentially set aside a budget item next year to do that kind of work. But I agree with you. I think it's necessary, but it's a lot more expensive than 10 grand. Especially if we're going to do it across, you know, five districts.
Well, I, I think we want to focus on our 10,000, you know, in terms of, in terms of how we deploy that, you know, certainly the, you know, building, building a parklet, you know, is costly.
And how much would each part, I'm like, how many parklets could that?
So a parklet on average is between $8,000 and $9,000. So it's very expensive for these small businesses. And so what we were, what Richard and I were thinking about is. Once someone completes the parklet, right, they come to us, they were going to build a parklet. They have two weeks to build it. They come to us, they prove that it's completed. We then issue them a check for, say, $1,000 just to cover, you know, a little over 10% of the cost. From the restaurant perspective, I think the future of restaurants is clearly outdoor dining. I think we've all gotten used to that. We need to help preserve and enhance our restaurants in this town. And I think this is a good way to do it. It's not going to make a huge difference. It doesn't, I don't think, make the decision whether you build a parklet or not, but $1,000, you know, that, that helps pay a credit card bill. And so I think this is something that, if we're talking about really effective economic development and putting capital back on the street. This is really good for everybody. It helps customers, it helps restaurants, it helps the town. So I think, especially with a fairly limited budget for COVID at only 10,000, I think this is a good way to deploy that currency.
I just have a question. The parklets to, we're in the middle of June. I, I would defer to, to the township committee. Well, is it, isn't most of them already built for the summer and aren't they kind of, that would be my question? And. Aren't we just taking a small microcosm of, of businesses for these parklets? Maybe to, to the point of maybe it's a, a micro grant of $500. And then we have 20 of them and they can use it for either a parklet or beautification or, and it's a first come, first served. And they have to, I guess then we need a subcommittee who's going to review the proposal and then say yay or nay on the. On the grant. But.
No objection from me. I mean, like, however helps, yeah.
Yeah, to me, I, to Tracy's point, I would like, I, I don't know if we should be signaling out just one segment of restaurants and. Food establishments and maybe it's, you know, business enhancement or however, you know, maybe, maybe it's. You know, maybe it's a cafe table and chairs to, you know. You know, do that jigsaw puzzle or.
Or stuff for a sidewalk sale.
Yeah, maybe it could tie into the sidewalk sales. I mean, I like the idea, to your point of impacting 20 businesses. We could also make sure it's across all the districts.
Right.
And one thing is we could also look at. Kind of make it proportional, because I mean, in some ways it doesn't make sense to do X number of businesses per district when there's so many in downtown and only a lesser amount. In like Short Hill Station, for example, but. Yeah, I like the idea of impacting like more businesses. Yeah, maybe even tying it into the sidewalk sales, like.
Yeah, maybe we could call it something.
Or a COVID refresh, like.
I think we call it something like storefront activation, right? We don't really care what it is. If it's, it's 500 bucks, it goes to a parklet or a table and chairs or cleaning your awning. As long as it improves the storefronts. And I think the sidewalk sale is a great point. So we can set up some fairly general parameters.
We'll call it explore refresh.
Explore refresh.
Or something of that nature and, and it's, and it's a wide net.
I do think we'd need an application deadline and then a review process. I don't think, I don't think first come, first served is necessarily the right, someone said that along the way. I think we would need. A rubric and assessment. I mean, I'm sure we'll get more.
In terms of those people that are going to apply and then, and then a, 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 what, a committee that's going to review the applications.
Yeah, first one to submit is the first one to be reviewed. Doesn't necessarily mean they're approved.
And we also want to make sure we get all the districts or that it's accessible to all the districts. You want to set parameters. So maybe we can, you know, Steve, maybe we can, you know, put, try to put together a proposal for approval maybe at the next meeting. You know, just so we have it right and. You know, but I do agree, I think we should, we should make smaller grants or so more, you know, businesses can, you know, you know, can get some help.
I'm surprised, how much a parklet costs, what, eight or nine thousand? That, I mean, so the town, I'm just curious, the town provides those. The barriers that goes around, because there are some in town, but what else is the expense then?
So just, I'll just touch on this a little bit, is that currently we only have two other parklet applications in front of us. At this current cost. But the parameters in the parklet application is that they need to be flush with the curb. So they have to put, put its pallets down and apply with a cup, but, you know, make it look nice. And then put some tables and chairs and umbrellas out there. That's, that's what the, so, I mean, I guess. So, so that, that's the expense to the.
I got you.
I'm not, I mean, I haven't checked with GMARCO, GMARCO is the one that is putting the parklet, what that cost was for them. But, but right now.
He did a nice job. They put flowers, they put lights. I mean, if you want to make it.
I did the, my previous job, I did the first parklets outside of Manhattan in the outer boroughs. And we needed a grant, I think we did three parklets and it cost us like 20 grand. It was, it, they have to be handcrafted and they're lumber and they get very expensive. So.
Believe our restaurants get to take two, two parklets. Two parking spaces, you know, we'll qualify for a parklet. So it's, it's actually a nice amount of space. I guess it depends how you see it. But it is a good amount, you know, it could be expensive.
Yeah, I like the idea though of multiple, like $500 brands and a process because. Micro grant program. And I, I think the devil's though in the, in the objective criteria, the application, what are the criteria? How are they chosen? And if somebody's rejected, why? You know, we just need to.
Sure, I'll work on that and we'll, we'll present at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need, and then we'll deal with the subcommittee, a sort of grant review group or something.
Not even sure it needs to be a subcommittee. Maybe it could just be the board. You know, we present them at board meetings.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we recuse ourselves if the business happens.
Sure.
Okay. A process question, should that really be under business development advocacy? Yeah. Okay, all right, that was my question. Okay.
Okay, and moving on to business development and advocacy, community focus groups, Jackie.
Yes, so we're grateful that two of our residents, Deb Fox and Alan. Steinberg, thank you. Have volunteered to run these. Focus groups really initially targeting Upper Milburn and the Mars Turnpike area with business and property owners. They will really be running them as sort of a third party independent. You know, and we are, we as the Explore Milburn Short Hills Board of Directors will, will assist in the facilitation, but not the participation. We tentatively have those scheduled for July 20th, 21st. To be confirmed and really looking for some honest feedback from those property owners and businesses. In terms of what drives them, what they'd like to see. And we're grateful that Deb Fox and Alan Steinberg are going to assist us with, with that. And that's scheduled, as I mentioned, for mid-July, mid-third week, third week in July. Yeah.
Are, are they going to go in with like a set questionnaire or kind of some process?
Yes, they're going to go in with, with some overview questions. Grateful that Steve has had some experience in this in the past, so he will act as a sort of facilitation rather than participation. So we'll take ourselves out of the equation so we can get as much honest feedback as possible, which is really the, the focus. And. And then we'll proceed and, and hopefully roll these out within some of the other districts as necessary. So that's, you know, scheduled for mid-July. Business Success Kit, Mr. Grillo.
Sure, I'll be very quick on these two items. So everybody has a copy of the Business Success Kit. This was one of my first assignments when I came, actually before I came on, I was to edit this thing. And so we have completed, we have probably about 50 or so copies, hard copies in the office. I've distributed some of these when folks have come in. We also have this online, as Tracy showed. This is also on the town website as well. So this is pretty much the primer for anything that a new or existing business needs. In the community gives a little history, talks about the vision plan for downtown, the CID gives important information about different departments. Some of the more prevalent concerns about garbage removal, who maintains a tree pit. Some of the more prevalent concerns about garbage removal, who maintains a tree pit, you know, what, what inspections are required, all of that is detailed in here. And then there's also action items as well, there's links to the different departments, and so this is really intended to be kind of a catch-all for questions, and then we are working with the construction office. They are going to be sending us a update every time there's a new construction permit that is pulled, not for minor things, but for large-scale construction. Obviously, that's an indication that construction is being done, potentially on a new building or a retrofit of a building. So we will be notified by the construction department, and then we will provide that applicant with this document as well. So trying to be really proactive in how we engage folks. So, full copies all here. Um-
You have the next section as well.
I do, and so, the direct business outreach, so a huge part of my job is fieldwork. I'm very lucky that Milburn is absolutely gorgeous, and I get to walk around every day, so I pinch myself a little bit. But what I've been trying to do, you know, is go into businesses and explain to them about some of the programs that exist that may be a little under the radar for them. So just over the last month, I distributed information to Vicki and her folks in, in their area about the flex parking. No, you know, nothing political, nothing slanted, simply, the town committee took a vote, they're putting out an RFP, be aware that this may occur, and once I get more information, I'll be back with another flyer, just to try to make sure that people understand what's going on in the community. Same thing with the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, there was a New Jersey EDA Small Business Program that I distributed to businesses. And then also, I thought this was interesting, you know, this is Pride Month, and we've been pushing on our LinkedIn account especially, resources for small businesses who want to enhance or support their LGBTQ staff members or owners. And so there's actually, within the US SBA, the Small Business Administration, there's an entire LGBTQ Assistance Department just for LGBTQ plus businesses. And so I never knew that existed, so we shared it as well. So I thought that was pretty interesting, and a cool way to get some word out, and kind of put, not just putting up a rainbow flag, but actually trying to get people to, to get the information that they need, so-
And this was the third year that Milburn was very proud to raise the pride flag.
Yeah.
And, and it was actually a really nice event. Anyway, I just want to throw that in.
And so, item number 12, I have a number of requests for approval, so I'd like to just go through these with you and explain what we're looking to do. Obviously, we have a budget, the budget is meant to be spent on community improvements, and so everything here, for the most part, is directly related to the communities. The first one, A-frame sign promotional program. In your packets, you have just a one-page printout of wooden A-frame signs. So there is actually, to my disbelief, an ordinance that describes how A-frame signs can be put out. When you come from the Wild West of New York City, some things are shocking that someone actually took the time to write this. But I, I've also served in New Jersey government, so I also know that these things happen. But there, there are, there are signs that are non-compliant, and so what we'd like to do is, A, put out our own signs, directional signs, focused on trying to get pedestrians off of just the main thoroughfares and thinking about going down. I'll use Stephen's business as an example, he's on Main Street, but he's off of Milburn. Be great to get people to think about all those businesses that go down that way. Cafe Monet and Gen Marco, they're farther up the street, right? It takes a conscious decision by a pedestrian. Nadeja's business on Essex Street, you know, a pedestrian needs to think about going to Essex. And so we'd like to put out four or five of these signs, they'll be directional and they'll be branded. And then what we'd also like to do is purchase 10 signs that we will distribute two to each district for free every year, just to businesses and say, hey, this is a beautiful sign, it's going to make your, your storefront look better, make your sidewalk look better. And we just kind of do a open random, you know, you call up, you're the first one, you get it, it'll have the Explore Milburn logo on it, and then we'll encourage them, obviously, to put it out, but put a witty saying, you know, just try to, just try to draw up, you know, more attention for the sidewalk. So I'm requesting approximately $1,200 out of our signage budget line. So this is, this money exists, I'm just requesting your approval to proceed with going out and trying to find the most cost-effective signs, but I estimate we'll probably be in the, in the ballpark of about $1,200.
So I have a question.
Yes.
These signs will be there all year round? These, i- is it, is it similar to those A-frame, Explore Milburn Short Hills?
Yes.
Special event, those, those kinds of-
The directional signs, the four or five, those will be out all the time. The 10 that we give to businesses, it's up to them what they do with it.
Okay.
But every single one will have the Explore Milburn logo, we'll probably buy just a small kind of plastic adhesive, so it gets our logo out there, too. You know, and people are walking down the street, and if we do this every year, over time, there's going to be a lot of Explore Milburn logos out there.
And could we also get that QR code, so if somebody wants to-
Sure.
I mean, that's, to me, that would go back to the website and back to use it as an opportunity to expand our brand, is what I'm suggesting.
I, I just want to say, those are going to be the chalk, chalk signs, is that correct?
I, I think ideally, they would be chalk, yes.
Okay, I just want to say, when, when you research which one to buy, from my experience, I'm on my third year of business, I'm on my third chalk sign, because they tend to, they're not, the ones that I have are, and they're not cheap, but then they tend to fall when there's wind. Once they've fallen a couple of times, the board gets detached because they're nailed down in a way, if, if you lay it outside in the rain, it's going to start to, we, so, really, like, investigate the quality, because I, I'm, I'm a victim of that, so and I haven't found the right one yet, so I don't know what the right, I love it, that's why I keep going back to it, but I-
Well, if I find the right one, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe by once, if it's heavy enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly.
But is it chalkboard, this also does take those highlighters that you can wipe off, right, because chalk isn't-
But the wiping is not great.
Right, and it builds up that.
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to a white, like-
Yeah, I mean, I like the chalk, I, I just say, yeah, the quality you have to be, like, investigating, it's hard, yeah, yeah.
And then it rains, or whatever.
So, I don't-
Do we need to take a motion?
I think you should make a motion.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Do we want to highlight any of the historical, you know, you know, in some of our districts, we have some amazing historical sites. I'm just saying, you know, we own, have, you know, we don't have signage for the sites, and they do, you know, they would help, you know, the business districts that they're in. Just saying, do we, is that something that we want to?
Are, are you thinking about sort of large pole signs that direct people to Taylor Park?
Oh, I'm just saying, we're going to have these signs, I think we want to, you know, highlight any of, any historical sites and any of the-
I think it would be in a different category, would-
Maybe that would be something-
So you're saying, use these, use these signs, but-
I'm drawing that out as a question, do, would we ever, would we use these signs to highlight any, any historical-
Not these, but I think in the, in the rest of what's coming, that would, it would be-
Yeah, I'll get to that. We, we don't have money in the budget this year, but we could definitely do it next year, and I've actually been in touch with, with another town on that, but-
Because that would be nice to do at some point.
Yeah, I really like that idea, too, because I've always said, work for the Historical Society builds community, we can put up real science, like historical events that occurred.
Or substantial signs. So much history, there's so much great history in our districts.
That's right.
In our districts, yeah.
Any other questions before we, can I ask for a motion to approve the $1,200 expenditure for this, the A-frame sign?
Estimated.
Estimated.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tracy, let's take a roll call, please.
Jermona Culligan?
Yes.
Tracy Kathleen, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadej Nicole?
Yes.
Michael Parlavickio? Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the list is a curb efficiency and signage improvement study. So this is something that came out of some discussions that I've had with a number of you, as well as Alex. I don't think it's any mystery that parking is a challenge here in downtown Milburn, it's probably the number one thing that I hear from businesses. And so there are some strategies that the town could implement for virtually no cost. That's restriping parking spaces, that's identifying areas where, I think Richard had a good example of a bus stop in front of Moonshine. The bus stop was moved, which then opened up parking spaces, which then allowed for a parklet. So there's often redundancies, things like parking bus stops that are sort of co-mingled with fire hydrants. You know, they could, if they were closer together, you could get parking spots. On Lackawanna, there's a curb cut to nowhere, but there's no parking space, it'd be a great place to put a parking space if we filled in the curb cut. So there's a couple of these oddities throughout town. And so I, I asked a consulting firm that does a lot of urban planning work in the bid sphere, especially here in North Jersey, to put together the proposal that you have in front of you, which is the downtown Milburn curb efficiency. And the idea here is to support and enhance existing efforts, including the master plan and the circulation plan that was presented to the TC about two weeks ago. There's a lot of really good ideas going around now, but they're, they're long, they're expensive. This is the kind of thing that could be implemented for relatively little amount of money, and could be done in five weeks. And then we can bring it back to the Township Committee and see if there are improvements that we can make, including some of the issues with the parking deck that Alex and I have spoken about as well.
So my only, I, I, I think this is a great, great idea, because I think if, if, if a lot of you can see, Milburn, unlike most communities that have boppers in all their parallel parking spaces, so down the street, if you eliminate those boppers, right, you probably gain more to increase spaces. So the only thing that I ask is that when you go through this, or when they, this is appropriate for, that you indicate which of these are cost-generative changes. Because I think it's one thing to do that analysis here, and then go to the Township Committee and say, hey, spend this money on, on these things, you know, because you're not going to sort of take the apron and raise the curb and-
Right.
Right, that's going to be on the township, so I just want to make sure that it's indicated, so that if there are things that we can pick off quickly, that we, we do that, but then things that are more cost-generative, again, you know, we're spending money on our side of things, too, so I just want to be kind of-
Agreed, and, and hopefully we can come back to you with both options. I think it's really incumbent upon the CID, you know, we talk about enhancing businesses as one of the missions, right? Parking is a huge handicap to, to businesses in this community, and so there's a map of the district. The, the study area really is the entire downtown district, so it goes up to Essex, it goes down to, to Main, past, past Taylor Street. So it really, it covers the entire area, and the goal here is to analyze parking types, both public and private, off-street, metered, et cetera. There are some places, for instance, where there's two-hour parking. Should that two-hour parking really be one-hour parking, or 30-minute parking? Would that be a better way to get cars in and out? So this is the kind of thing that this study will analyze. We've also looked at the parking deck. The parking deck doesn't have particularly good signage, it's fairly underutilized. I think there's some really inexpensive strategies that we could implement on the town side to try to get more people in there, and of course, bring up revenue. There's some issues with employee parking on the streets, they should be parking in the parking deck, and so there's some strategies we can address there as well. And so overall, I think that this is a really comprehensive, yet quick-to-achieve study. And I think it's a good step forward for the CID, and as we interact with the Township Committee to show that there's some tangible results that we can produce, at least in policy.
So the study area would, would include the parking deck?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a, a bunch of questions, Steve. So obviously, one of the things, I think, touching on what Alex said, and obviously, if they come back with, you know, some changes, like how much will it, you know, cost the township, there's kind of a risk of that. But how does this in, align with, like, the, like, the vision plan?
Yeah, so, so I look at this two ways, I think, A, it's so weird talking to someone that's behind me.
Sorry.
But, so first of all-
It's okay.
So, so this, the downtown vision plan will be used to inform this plan, right, so we don't want to deviate too much from that. So they will be reviewing and sourcing some recommendations there. The Taylor Park entrance program or project, I think, is also something that needs to inform this study as well. So really, the, the core responsibility, not only is sort of counting these spots and figuring out solutions, but also making sure that it doesn't deviate from the existing plans. And so I can't give you an exact answer, right, I don't know what they're going to recommend based on those plans, but that'll be part of the, the work product and the work description.
My other, I mean, I have a lot, I could talk for hours on parking, so I won't bore everybody, and obviously, there is an issue of it, and it's the number one complaint I get from my customers. But I do think we have an enforcement issue as well. You know, I think there's a lot of employees from different, you know, stores that park on the street. I think maybe our business permit parking, maybe it's too expensive, I, I don't know if any of those will be addressed, because I know I buy a second, you know, permit for my full-time employee, but I know that I, and I'm not going to, I see a lot of people feeding the meter all day long. So I wonder if any of those kind of situations would be addressed, because honestly-
What we could do, I wouldn't necessarily-
And they take up a lot of parking.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't expect this study to actually review those issues.
Hold on, wait, sorry, I don't know, could you guys hear me? I, I lost them for a second.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect this study to review those type of issues, however, I would expect this study to mention them, because those aren't necessarily physical problems, but I think they are part of the bigger parking issue. And so certainly, as we meet, and, and I would encourage this board to get involved with this consulting team and give your feedback, we'll certainly reach out to businesses throughout, but yeah, I think those types of things need to be included in the report, because, you know, you can change physical parking spaces, but if people are still, if those parking space regulations aren't being enforced, you've done nothing. So yes, I agree that that'll have to be an aspect of this.
So question on, Steve, on page six, the study area, just to confirm, it's bigger than what's shown here, right? You said it's farther north and farther south, or whatever, up and down on Main Street, right, it's beyond-
Yeah, look at the blue and green bubbles.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, the, the green streets-
It's all, yeah. Okay.
The ink didn't spill. Oh.
I just see this darker area.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, so that, that's, it includes the whole, okay.
Correct.
And how, Steve, how long would the study take?
About five weeks.
And what, and if approved, when would you think that it would commence?
I would say we could probably commence actual work within two weeks. We'd have to, we'd have to sign a contract, finalize the scope of work, and, yeah, but I think two weeks.
Can I just make a comment? I'm just, my one concern, and I don't want to poo-poo this in any way, because I'd be really excited if we did do something like this, but I'd be concerned that they came back to us with all these suggestions, and a lot of them really are not feasible, let's say, whether there's, you know, I don't know, you know, township limit, you know, township committee limitations, or cost prohibitive, or any of those sort of things, so just sort of a general comment, I don't know if you could speak to it, really?
No, that, that's always a concern when you're doing any type of planning study, right? You don't want to come back with the results that are not feasible. And so that'll be part of, as we analyze the scope of work, it really, you know, my, my, my note to the consultants will be, you know, we are concerned that if you propose something that's exorbitantly expensive, don't even think about it, it's, it's not, that's not the intent of this study, and so, you know, there, there's a master vision plan, I'm sure it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's a big scope type of plan. This is a much more micro plan, and so it'll be incumbent upon me and Alex, and, and you know, we'll probably get, you know, the police department involved, and a bunch of stakeholders related to this, to make sure that things are being assessed realistically.
And the price tag?
$3,500.
Is that a firm?
Yes.
Because it's based on, kind of, I see approximately 50 hours, I see-
Maybe we set it as not to exceed that number.
We can do that.
Yeah.
And, and all-in, no out-of-pocket expenses will be, you know, will not be-
All right, so it sounds, that, I, I think it's, I, I think it's something that's very helpful, so I would entertain, ask for a motion to approve an agreement with Commercial District Services for not to exceed a amount of $3,500 to conduct this study.
And you should authorize me to execute.
And, sounds good, too, and authorize our executive director to authorize, negotiate, authorize the agreement. We have a motion for that?
Moved.
In a second. One second. I'll second it. Can we take a roll call?
Jermona Culligan?
First? Yes.
Got to go.
It's all about to go.
Okay, I'll reverse that time. Tracy Kathleen, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadej Nicole?
No.
Michael Parlavickio?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
I have to apologize, I'm taking antibiotics and allergy medications to try to resolve some issue I have. I'm on the downshift, so I'm sorry about this point.
We'll move quick. Next item, Captain Mike, Tree Pole Banner, relation, not going to believe this, it's quite a-
So simplest thing, what we're going to do here is, most downtown areas have banners. Milburn had them. There's a couple that are still up, especially around Town Hall. I imagine they've been up for probably three to five years at this point. They're eligible, they need to be removed. And so what I did was I asked that same firm, CDS, to go out and basically work as a general contractor and solicit bids from banner installation companies. And so they did get four of them from regional companies. The one that is presented here is the low bidder, Riley's Outdoor Decor. So what you're looking at here, go to page 11. They did present us with three different options. The first one is to install 225 banners throughout the district. That would basically cover every eligible poll. The second one is 100, and the third is 75. Within our budget, the second option, which is 50% of the total, so looking at basically about 100 or so, works for our budget. If you go to the next page, on page 12, this is subject to marketing committee approval, design names, et cetera. But this is essentially what they would look like. So we would have five different banners for the five different districts. Each district would have its own name on it, its own color, and that color would then correspond to other branded material within that district. Our logo and then a hashtag would be on that as well. So what I'm requesting today is approval to authorize me to proceed with negotiations for that amount, which is, if you go to page 14, that bottom number there, an option two, which is 11,634. That would be the design, the actual banners, the hardware and the labor associated with installation. So 11,634 would be the total for 100 banners. They'll be as equally distributed throughout the districts as possible. Some districts have more polls than others. It's just the way it is. But ideally, that, that would be the way that we would settle this. And the nice thing about it is, this is a one-time expense, really. This is probably something we would have to do every five years. And then, of course, if we need to replace them, we can replace them as needed. But I think from the perspective of having done this many times before, 100 banners with hardware and installation for 11,006 is a, is a very, very good price. Obviously, we're going to have to work with DPW and, and the town, make sure that whatever we're doing fits in and is appropriate structurally. That's what we're paying the, the service for. But I think all in 11,634 is a very good price. And I think it's something we absolutely need to do for our, our placemaking, to not have street pole banners on our, on our streets and our neighborhoods is, is a real detractor. So that is my request.
Just real quick, Steve, I know you and I have chatted a little bit about this, just, one is probably to make sure that one, that those that are being installed on the current, should not need any additional hardware.
Correct.
And that they are of a different size than probably would be expected in other areas. My only other thing is just ensuring that JCPL and others.
Yep.
Are, 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 are okay. And I'm happy to introduce you with.
Since that's part of this contract, they, the consultant, or the, I should say, the, yeah, the consultant and the contractor will be doing that work for us. But we're, nothing is going up until we finalize everything with the town and DPW. You're correct, there are some poles that do not need new hardware. So that's a little bit of a cost savings as well. So this 11,6 probably will come down a little bit as well.
Yes. So is there a guarantee period for these, these, these banners? I mean, do they, do they normally, so if it, or I don't know how it works, but do they normally guarantee them for certain, or replacement? Or do we print extras so that if it gets tattered or worn or?
So you can do it a couple of ways. Obviously, I haven't seen a contract here because I haven't been authorized to engage in one. But yes, I, what I've done in the past is there's typically a service agreement. So if something is damaged, say a truck hits it, which happens all the time, they'll come out and replace it as part of your service agreement. If they become damaged due to storms or weather, they'll come out and replace it. And usually that's within the first two to three years, depends on the company. So that'll be part of the negotiation that I would engage in.
But Steve, would that be part of the 11,6, or is that something, an extra fee for that, like service?
So typically, it's inclusive of the contract. But again, I can't speak specifically to this one. But once I get my hands on a contract, I will let you know.
Steve, I know you mentioned this proactively, but yes, just to confirm, we would definitely want to coordinate on marketing and color scheme and exactly.
Hashtag, everything.
Be all of that.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, there is no design. What you see here is pretty close to what the design will be, right? We sort of agreed on this, but we're talking in the marketing committee about changing some of the neighborhood names to be a little more specific. We do want to make sure that the color coding matches, you'd mentioned in an email, you know, about downtown, maybe that should be blue instead of whatever it is here, red. You know, so those are all things that we can hash out. But essentially, that's, this is what these banners will look like. Additionally, these colors are slightly off. We do have, and Jomana put this together, we do have a color palette for our branding. So whatever we finally decide on, we'll have to use our same branding. So this is a little bit of a process. It will take some time. But again, once it's up, it's a capital expense and it's kind of done with.
And by now, you're only asking for the, the first part of this presentation. You're not talking about the other signage, or?
If I had the money, I would ask for the other signage. Trust me, I tried to make it work. In my big three-card Monte game of the budget, it didn't work. But next year, certainly. It is. Yeah, it is. And I phased in banners in other districts before. It's sometimes just prohibitively expensive. But we do have this as a line item in our budget originally.
And it does seem like a basic thing that we are missing.
It, it makes us legitimate.
Once again, could you have a QR code on this? So.
A QR code and every. The only, the only problem is the ladders are going to be expensive. What's 100 ladders cost, Jackie?
Sorry, why 100 banners versus like 75? Seems like a lot. I don't know. You know better than I do.
Yeah, 100 was the number that they came back to us, really was based on the total number of poles that they could install on. So some poles you can't have the hardware on. And so the number they gave us of that, 225 or so, was the total number of eligible poles, shall we say. And then the 100 was just cutting that by a little bit more than half. So you don't want to make this into a parade ground, you know, we don't, I think 225 would make us look a little silly. But I think across five districts and a fairly large geography, 100 is probably less than you realize.
Did you say this, these are almost done being designed, or we're, we're gonna like redesign?
What, what do you see there in terms of the, the way that the, the district name is laid out, the way the logo, the welcome? That's all pretty much going to stay the same. We do need to determine the final color assignment per district. Then we'll have to make sure that it meets the exact same color of the branding that Jomana's put together. We are discussing in the marketing committee various hashtags that we want to use. So we'll have to make a final decision on which hashtag goes on this. So I would say, you know, in terms of what they'll generally look like, that's pretty much it.
I mean, I would make one suggestion, if I could. I would add the word district, because welcome to Short Hill Station. That almost sounds like a New Jersey Transit sort of welcome thing.
Okay.
And these are, and welcome to Wyoming.
Yeah, we've, we've actually said, I think, the name we came up was the Wyoming Corporate District or something like that.
I think we said business district, but then we said, we also, we wanted to get some feedback from the businesses in that area. We've been using the phrase Wyoming District, I think.
So this is also something that we probably would not execute until we finish those focus groups. Because Upper Milburn Avenue is a good, I don't know if Upper Milburn Avenue has meaning or doesn't have meaning. Maybe it has meaning to someone that's lived there for 30 years, but no, the person that just moved in, it means nothing. And so I think part of those focus groups.
There's a sign there now, Upper Milburn.
There is, yeah.
Those are just good ways that, as we, you know, we have a marketing committee that's been exceptionally engaged. We have focus groups. So I would want to engage in this, kind of get the planning together, and then probably by the end of July, we could then go forward with purchasing.
I'd also recommend doing kind of a walkthrough. I mean, it's a lot of walking, but I think that placement is really, really a vital part of this.
Are you volunteering?
I wish I could.
I, I agree.
Anyway, but, but I think that pinpoint targeting, you know, you have 100 sites, you have five districts. I think it's really important that we know that, you know, this is where it's going to go, that's laid out.
You know, in, in my career, I'll admit I've made mistakes on this, like, I've done them in winter time. Well, you know what happens when the spring comes? Trees go in front of them. You know, and you just put something up and now nobody could see it. So yeah, you have to, you have to really go.
Before you actually put them up.
No, I know. Go, go walk it, look at the.
Just make sure everything makes sense, so we don't waste anything.
So my request is to, like with the previous, authorize me to engage in a contract and execute that contract so that we can begin the process.
Do we have a motion for that?
Motion.
Getting exactly what Steve just said. Okay, Nadez, move it. Second?
Second.
Tracy, can we have a roll call, please?
I'll go backwards. Stephen Weiner?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Michael Parlevechio?
Yes.
Nadez Nickel?
Yes.
Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine, yes. Jomana Culligan?
Yes.
Next item, not-for-profit training. So this was something that was brought to my attention fairly early on. Obviously, this board is fairly new, and I think we could benefit certainly from some really robust board training, especially focused on budgeting, governance, legal requirements, et cetera. And so I spoke to a couple of people in my circle, you know, got some ideas about who might be a good consultant to do this. You have a proposal here from SRT Advising and Consulting. The bio of Sharmila Rao Thacker is included here. She's currently the CEO of the Staten Island Not-for-Profit Association, which is a group that provides not-for-profit assistance to, or assistance to not-for-profit groups. But she was based in Chicago for a number of years and has done, as you see from her bio, probably the better part of a decade and a half of this type of training. There is a scope of work on that second page here. "The training will build an understanding of and provide tools to meet the core rules and responsibilities of nonprofit board. We'll discuss the board's roles in governance, fiscal oversight, ambassadorship, advocacy, and learn, and help participants learn how to better perform these roles. And then the end product will be a half-day interactive meeting for all of us, probably in the middle of July, if we can schedule that with everybody. Prior to that, I will be working intensely with the consultant to build out really an agenda and a lesson plan for that day, making sure that whatever is presented is not generic, but very specific to this Sid. She'll also be engaging our attorney, Mr. Cooper, who will, I think, can give some advice, certainly on the legal side of it. But, you know, this is, this is something that certainly I think needs to be done, so that all of us are prepared to, to oversee this Sid board in the future and give it lasting life."
Can this be videotaped for future boards also?
Absolutely.
Or. Yeah.
As people come on.
Yeah.
And also, if, if somebody can only attend.
Right, virtual.
Or, you know.
The idea here is to do an in-person. They probably do it in this very room. But yeah, if someone has to attend virtually, she is willing to do that as well. So we can do both in-person and virtual.
And, and.
And record it.
And record it for future boards.
If it's virtual on Zoom, you can just record it. Yeah.
Well, sometimes there's restrictions that they don't let you, you know.
Okay, great. I think that should be in the contracts.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to ask again for authorization to engage in a contract and authorize said contract for board training with SRT Advising and Consulting. And I would like to have this training in mid-July. If that, if schedules permit, we may not be able to do it quite that soon, but that is the intent.
It should be recorded. I, I think that's really important. Yeah, yeah, so.
Stephen Weiner?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Michael Parlevechio? Nadez Nickel?
Can I abstain?
Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine, yes. Jomana Culligan?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, I've spoken with Chatham and Short Hills Lifestyle Magazine. They're a locally-based, how do we call this, social and living publication. Everybody actually has a copy of one of their recent various publications on your desk, just so you can see what it looks like. I met them at a, at a local event, started talking. They were very interested in promoting and supporting the Sid. They really like what we're doing in terms of business development. So we had a follow-up meeting, discussed what we could potentially get as a marketing package. So what you have here is, on the second page, the, the back of the first, is the proposal. And so you're looking at a monthly vertical ad for a year. Then there'll be an editorial feature on the Sid, including photos, interviews, et cetera. That'll be a one-time. And then they will also do seven around town, seven good times, and seven calendar. So that's event photos, press releases, et cetera. We'll basically have a reserved spot in the magazine every month. They are offering that to us at $395 plus $50 design fee, which is $444 a month. If we, I anticipate we'd probably start in the September edition, just because they've actually started publishing their, they've already gone to print on the July and August, I believe. So it would be $1,780 for the remainder of this year. And then for a full year, it comes out to 5,340, which I think for print media of a readership of over 59,000 in the zip codes of 07078 and 07928, I think to test the waters in terms of print media for us, I think is, this is a very good deal. So I, I'm in favor of trying this out and seeing where it gets us.
Can I ask a question? I know I had asked some of these questions to Steve. I had not ever seen this magazine before. And I'm just wondering how it's distributed and how people get it, and does it go to people in, in Milburn in 07041? And I'm just.
I agree.
And I know, I know we had talked about some other possible publications. I don't feel clear that this is the right one to start with. I guess I'm curious to know from other folks in town, do you get this? Do you know of it?
I get it.
I get the magazine, yeah.
If I say, do I not get it because I'm in 07041, and so isn't it not going to Milburn? It feels a little weird.
Maybe you have somebody that steals it out of your mailbox.
I've never gotten it. And I read, I must, I read all my local, my local things. Jackie, do you get this?
I don't, I don't remember.
Because you're in South Mountain, right?
No, no, I'm in, I'm in Short Hills.
You're in Short Hills. Why did I think South Mountain? I made that up.
That's the magazine.
Yeah. I do, I feel really concerned if the Milburn zips don't get this.
I think it's a.
Because I'm the only Milburn zip on the.
No, it's a, you know, you and I had talked about this offline, and that's why I got this information on the targeted zips and the readership. I started this conversation with, with the magazine, wanted to see what they would give us in terms of price. I think from a price perspective, this is a steal. You can't get a better deal than this for a 12-month publication.
Giving a lot. So is this something people actually read? I'm sorry.
On the other hand, if it's not getting to some of the zip codes you feel like it needs to, then I wouldn't want to engage. But then again, it does go to two.
Well, it goes to Chatham.
Right. No, they don't. It goes to just these two zip codes.
But what also, what was the, the circulation number it said?
They had it 59,500.
What's our total number of households in Short Hills? Do you know approximately? But like approximately, I mean, aren't we like 20,000 households altogether? I'm sorry, how many? So I'm just saying.
This also goes to businesses as well.
I understand, but I'm just saying, something's not computing for me. If we're 6,000 households altogether.
Readers.
Households.
And it's Chatham. It's not just Short Hills.
Businesses get it as well, right? So.
Well, you know, there's something else, to Tracy's point, you know, I think if we don't proceed tonight with this, right? We can at least say, well, we know what a standard would be. And if we go and talk to other magazines, you know, if they come back to us and say, we'll give you the same package for twice the price, we could say, well, maybe this isn't our targeted areas, but it's a good price. And so maybe this is, instead of approving it tonight, maybe we could table it and say, let's go out and get some more options.
I want to point out though, too, I know it's Chatham, obviously, but part of what we're doing is to engage with people outside of.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what, what the envisioned ads would be, like their quarter-page ads? And what are we trying to communicate? Because maybe it's okay that we're not advertising to ourselves and, and.
Right, right.
You know, so.
And like I said, you know.
Would it be event, the programming, I, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so on a monthly basis, they would cover whatever event that we were highlighting that month. They would do post-event photos in the subsequent edition. And then they would do press releases seven times. So if we felt we had an event we wanted to do a press release on, we could then choose to put it in.
And do they, do they have a digital version of this online?
They do.
I would personally be in favor of taking time to do a little more research. Like I know Jomana and I had mentioned, like Vicinity Magazine, Milburn, Short Hills. Like, I know Jumana and I had mentioned, like, Vicinity Magazine, Melbourne Short Hills, Melbourne and Short Hills Magazine. They all have their own objectives and issues, right? Been in touch with Melbourne and Short Hills Magazine about them barely having anything about Melbourne and Short Hills, and they actually have been willing to go out and cover more things locally. I, I don't know. That's me personally, and I just feel like, and again, I agree, a big part of our role is to go out beyond our boundaries to attract more people. But I'm still not totally understanding the 59,000, because I think Chatham is not that big either, so. Maybe it's a lot bigger than I realized.
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
It might be better to go outside altogether rather than having to split. And I'm very conscious of that, too, like, you know, but like, I feel like if you're going to do Short Hill and Chatham, probably we might be better off just doing outside community rather than having Short Hills be a part of some average. Or then do all Melbourne, Short Hills.
Right. And I would ask the question, right? Let's, let's say, because we have some stores in Melbourne that do get this magazine. So I'm wondering how, why.
Yeah, they probably have subscriptions from people in Melbourne. I'm sure there's, there's a degree of 07, 041 that gets.
We don't pay for it. I think it's a free.
Yeah.
Yeah, I personally.
Full ads, basically.
Options are, and then say, okay, this is this, this is this target audience, this is this, and, and see what the reach and the scope is. So rather than to make a decision based on one publication in a vacuum without looking at.
I mean, just to broaden that a little bit, then there's also the online publications and a four or $500 a month. I don't know. Again, I don't want to overcomplicate things, but.
That's fine.
I guess.
If you, if you want me to go out and get comps for other publications, I think.
Yeah, it's great to have a.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we could, maybe we can continue this at the next meeting.
Yeah.
You could bring us a proposal for maybe two or three options.
And, and this is not as time-sensitive as everything else, right? So.
No, thank you.
And it would be nice, I will say that as a merchant, it would be nice to have this in place for the holidays, you know? In other words, or in the middle of the summer, but it would be nice if we, if we got our act together. And we targeted, we targeted to do something by more date-oriented, you know, by September. And we did September, October, November, December through up to Christmas. And then, yeah, so, so it's a, I think it's a really good idea, and, and I think we should do it, you know, for the fall.
I have, I have two more items then. We don't need to vote on that, because we don't need to vote table.
Thank you.
This isn't a committee meeting, right? So, and thank you for your feedback. Again, this is, you know, trial by error on some of this stuff. We do need to find what, what fits us. So we do want to focus on capital improvements, placemaking, landscaping. We're a little tight this year in terms of our budget, and so I wanted to find a project that was impactful yet affordable. And so the place that jumped out at me was Morris Turnpike. Because of the way the buildings are set back, right? It's not particularly pedestrian-friendly. Putting in pedestrian type of infrastructure doesn't really work there. I spent a lot of time out there recently, and I, I think what we could do is just improve that strip of grass that goes between the curb and the sidewalk. So it runs basically the entire distance from the Walgreens to the Benihana. You and I had spoken about improving that probably my first week. And so I've spoken to some landscaping companies, got some roundabout ideas about how they would have to install it. There's some concerns, obviously, that, you know, salt and snow get kicked up on it. You probably don't want to put in mulch or stone. So grass is probably the easiest to maintain, cheapest to install, and the most durable. And so the, the proposal, the proposed, posed scope of work in front of you is something that I assembled based on conversations with a couple of experts. This is what I would request that we put out for bid. So that's what I'm asking you for tonight is permission to proceed, to put this scope of work out to bid, determine what kind of prices we get back, and then hopefully, if we get a reasonable price, start in the fall. They wouldn't do it now. It's too hot. The grass would just die off when it's installed. But this would probably be a September, October project. Secondly, we would call for the installation of large planters. My, my goal here is to create the look of sort of a traditional boulevard. So instead of just a county highway that people drive up or a state highway, it would have planters with our logo, you know, it would look really nice. It would just look really sharp as you go up that, that short strip. And it doesn't really require a lot of maintenance. We can get durable flowers. The grass would just have to be mowed by the township, which I, I spend your money easily. You can go, Mo. No, between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll give them grass, and they're going to mow it. But I think long-term, this would make it, that area look really good. It's, it's, it's very messy right now. Property owners are taking it upon themselves to put down their own asphalt, put down their own stone. People drive over the curb, and so that, that all gets moved onto the road. It's, it's really just not appealing. So I think in terms of we want to improve a streetscape and do it affordably and quickly, this is the best place in the district to do it.
We have access to this, whatever this piece of property is, it's.
That's my understanding. From when we.
It's not a state issue or. Yeah, it's in, it's the right. It's the right, it's in the right of law. Okay.
Can I clarify two things?
Sure.
Is this the whole strip on Morris from Walgreens up to Benihana?
Some places would be separate, like, so some people do landscape.
Right.
So we wouldn't touch stuff that's already been landscaped, but if it's not maintained, we would then put in grass. We also wouldn't tear up any existing concrete.
I'm a little concerned, though, about what Alex just said. If there's not someone responsible for maintaining it, are we going to put something in, and then no one's responsible for maintaining it? That sounds concerning.
How does the town deal with that?
It's probably. That the property are responsible for maintaining.
So most, with the caveat that I haven't reviewed the specific code, and I'll do so, but it, it's fairly universal among municipalities in New Jersey that the property owner is responsible for maintaining the public right-of-way adjacent to their property. So, I mean, I, it would be a communication to the property owners if this is a, a new, a new addition to their responsibility would be helpful, just to, to remind them of this responsibility. The other thing with respect to planters, depending on what you had in mind, because it is a state highway, DOT issues can sometimes come into play, depending on the height. If you have low profile in flowers, that shouldn't be an issue.
That would be the intent.
If, yeah, if you had trees or higher shrubs than sightlines. Again, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, but sometimes DOT can surprise you.
There are plantings at some of the exits to the strip malls, so anything that we would put in would be below the existing plantings to, to allow for the right-of-way.
And would we, can I ask a question? Alex, would, would we be, are we capable of, you know, are, are our DPW guys able to maintain those? Yeah, like if we put in planters.
Water it, you mean?
Like water it or maintain whatever. I mean, I think the question, I think the question is, you know, in that strip, and I've looked at it very carefully lately, you know, there's a lot of commercial traffic, and we just want to be assured that we invest money there, that it's, that we can maintain it.
Is that the strip, Alex?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two districts. It's B2 and B3.
But the planters that we have in town that were done by the beautification volunteers, those are watered by the township, right? So why would, if we put planters there, why would these be treated any differently than the ones that are in town?
So we would have to take that on.
It sounds like maybe we need a little more information.
Well, remember, I'm, I'm just, all I'm requesting now is permission to put out the bid.
Okay.
So if we're under no obligation.
It's just to get bids.
And just to get.
And we would also research these other questions. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Time to contact the owners, too.
My guess is he would come back with some suggestions for answers to these questions when he submits it for the bid.
The idea is a good one, though.
Yeah.
I think it's a very good idea. We just don't want to lose on our investment if we, whatever we're putting down.
The other question I have, is there any grant money for, available for something like this or not? I don't know. I'm asking.
Well, I, I think this is probably the perfect kind of thing for a private grant. You know, going to a bank or a ShopRite or something like that and say, or, but a bank or a supermarket, maybe King's, right? They're right there. You know, you go, listen, hey, can we have $5,000 towards this project? And we'll, we'll put, you know, your name up there. And so that's the kind of thing that, once we have a scope of work and we have a final price, you can go shop it around as well. And we do have time. Like I said, this, this would not be installed until the fall at the earliest. If we can hit that sort of September, October window, that's the ideal time to plant this.
And we want to make sure we coordinate with the township with their DPW to make sure that we, whatever we, planters we, that we make.
Yep. Right. So, and, and what I'll do in here is I will ask for a description of the type of flowers that they would put in the planters so that we can make sure that they are, that they're, they'll be robust enough to survive.
Yeah.
I mean, what you have, and through your Complete Streets program, the flowers that you've selected are particularly durable. I don't know if you ever, anybody remembers that, but like just outside here, the corner of Essex and Melbourne, that's a type of grass that's really responsive to road salt, so it doesn't die. So they intentionally pick that for there, so we'd have to do the same thing here.
All right, so entertain a motion to put this out to bid. Again, that's no obligation to us, yeah?
So move.
Mover? Second? Got a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay. Jumana Coligan.
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine. Yes, Andrew Morgan.
Yes.
Nadej Nickel.
Yes.
Michael Parlavickio.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
Steven Weiner.
Yes.
And with respect to Mr. Parlavickio's headache, this is the last item on the list. Parking kiosk. So, Mr. Feld, there's a, there's a thundering there. I didn't get it until today, but you have it for your records. So in your packets, there's a proposal from a company called JCM Services. The idea here is we have, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'll blame Jesse, there are four parking kiosks that we have in town.
Two and a lot.
Yeah. So the part, these are the, these are the stalls that you go into to pay for public parking. So one right outside, next to Dunkin' Donuts. So I came up with this idea when I walked past one of them, and we had this eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of white paper with our logo on it. And I said, this is no good. We have to do better than this. So I went and I got a bid from a company that does this throughout the region to do wraps. So basically, the way that these are set up, you've got three walls, right? You have, you enter, and then there's a wall on the right, the left, and the back. They're divided in half by metal stanchions, so there's really six windows, essentially. What we would do is take a 24-by-18 print of our logo, and then it would go with our, so this is what it would look like minus the Twitter handle. We don't have, so they'd remove that, and then we would just fix the, whatever hashtag we decided to. But that's on Tracey. So that's what it would look like, and then there would be six of these on each kiosk. So when someone goes up to pay, the first thing they see is this big logo. It helps them know that they are in downtown. This is the entity, and then they can, we could put a QR code on it.
Jack, replace the Twitter with a QR code.
There we go. I, just a quick question. I don't know what the township's relationship is with the kiosk manager, just to make sure there's not. Is there any issue? Sometimes they like, they sell that advertising. I, I don't know if there's any. Look. We, we don't. They're our machines.
Okay. So.
Sometimes it's the owner of the, if we don't, if they're not our machines, if we're contracted to somebody. Their arms. Okay.
So my request, the last one of the evening, is for the authorization for me to engage in a contract, $1,200 for the installation of 24 of these. Am I multiplication right? No. Six times four is 24. 24 of these, so six per stall, four stalls. This is the fabrication and the installation.
Wait. I have a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Is there? Is there a. Convergent scale or price that doing all four at the same time? What I'm asking, is it possible to, to see what this? I, I, I can't envision, like, I, you know.
Sure.
I can't envision it and what it's going to look like when you put it up.
I can go back to them and ask them to just do one, and what we could do is, you know, we can use it and see if we like it. Great, they can, I mean, it's just now fabricated, right? It's they have the, they'll have the right logo. They'll just have to print more of them. So.
And how are they attached, Steve?
They're, they're adhesive.
They're like adhesive.
It's like a, it's like a film.
Yeah, it's like an adhesive film. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's a good idea if we wanted to do a mockup just to make sure that we're.
I think it'll look really sharp, and I think it'll help downtown look a little bit better, because those stalls just, I think they're a wasted branding opportunity. But if you guys think that doing one, you know, just to see how it looks makes sense, sure.
So. So it would be all six panels with this.
Correct.
My, my, so it's, it's a lot of this.
No.
No, it's the whole logo, Jackie, broken up, correct, Steve?
No, it's six logos.
Oh. Oh, so it's on a repeat?
Yes, it's on a repeat, like a banner.
I mean, how high is it?
Yeah, 24 by 18. So it's, yeah, 18 inches. Yeah.
Wait, I don't understand, because then our, our logo won't exactly fit in that proportion. So how do you?
So it's kind of like this, right?
No, flipped, exactly how you're looking at it.
And it just goes.
I, I don't, I didn't, that wasn't in the packet, was it? I didn't see it.
Oh, I just got it today.
Okay, so I can't really see it, but I don't see what, I can't see it. Sorry, guys. But is it, you're saying that, I thought when we, you first explained it to us. Thanks. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. See it now. Okay, so, so it's our logo divided into six pieces, and then those little icons underneath, or that?
Six times.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay, fine, got it, got it.
That's a, that's a lot of visual.
That's a lot of the same.
Is it, is it possible to just want, do one or two panels? I don't know why we need six.
Then when you, when you're walking, you're walking from different angles. Everybody can see it depending on where they're coming from.
Yeah. I would definitely be in favor of doing one initially and seeing how it looks. I do, the idea.
One of the, one of the design challenges is that those panels are divided in half by the metal. If that wasn't the case, I would just do one large one on each panel, so you'd only have three. Can't do that, because we have the metal protruding. So it's either six, or you do one, and then one, it, you have to really make the banner. The way that these are set up, if they were built differently, you could do it differently, but.
I would say, I guess the other idea would be to not have the same thing on all the six panels, like to be.
Could do that.
Having a logo in one place and then having other things.
We could also do.
Other place. The district that you're in.
So we could do something, that's a great idea. So we could do something where, we obviously have two panels, right? You could have the logo and then the name of the district, the logo, the name of the district.
But I think we only have these kiosks in downtown, correct?
One of these, and, and maybe, maybe five of our districts, you know, something where.
I don't, but do we have five? I don't, we don't have these kiosks.
Wait, one sec, we're not here.
I guess.
No, you could do it.
I was saying, I was just saying that we don't have these kiosks, I thought, in the other districts.
Aren't they just downtown?
Yeah, they're only downtown.
They're only downtown?
There's four, there's four kiosks. They're all downtown.
All downtown, I think, yeah.
Yeah. It's just downtown.
Are we sort of, can we even do something, you know, like what we've talked about, you know, shopping, green space, great dining?
Yeah, we could maybe do, like, let's say we did three logos, right? Let's just say for argument's sake, on the left panel, right on each side, you do the logo. And on the right panel, you say, shopping, dining, entertainment, you know, whatever. You could do something like that.
So, yeah, we want to.
Yeah.
About what we say. I know, because we want to be a little different than the usual.
So what I, what I can do is go back to them and say, you know, we, we like the design concept, we like the number, but we don't like that it's all the same logo.
Or the same content.
Yeah, can you give me different content? And then I'll get a proposal from them, just, and then we can go back to the marketing committee and decide what those taglines are.
A little bit on.
Yeah.
I imagine the cost might be higher, because then they're needing to print more.
Yeah. But I'll go back to them and ask for more diversity in the message.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should brainstorm first a little bit, and then, so that you have something to go back to them with.
Let me call them tomorrow and find out if, if the price goes up significantly, and then.
Do you have another copy of that sheet with the prices? Yeah, no, no. I didn't get it in my, in my packet.
Which one?
That last sheet. That last sheet, yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's it for our approval action items, Steve?
That is it, yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're on to board comments. I just want to start with our next meeting, Thursday, July eighth. I will not be present at that meeting, so you can have a scrum over who wants to share the meeting.
Will that also be six thirty?
We're still advertised at seven. I'll leave it to everybody.
I mean, well said.
Do we have a forum?
I I will, I can be online if it's still online, but I can't be physically here.
Certainly can. Um, so. Um, summer, but um the uh I I would just also maybe just. Keep advertising for six thirty, but then advertise the rest of the meeting. Then we advertise the rest of the.
Let's go to the last for the person. But we have it down at seven PM right now.
Yes.
We only sent the notice for the this meeting.
Correct.
Well, maybe you want to keep it at seven because of the New York thing.
I don't want to be the, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to impose, suppose, but.
Should we change the day? Is there a better day for other people? Are you at that whole week?
Yes, I'm taking myself to college. I'll be back the week after.
I won't be here that next week.
I won't be in person either, just so I don't know if that affects anything. I can probably log, I can do it virtually again.
Steve won't be here the following.
Yeah, the only week I could do it would be that week of the fifth, which is what we're scheduled for anyway, scheduled for the eighth.
So should we just keep it and some people are remote? It sounds like. And do we want to do the six thirty or the seven?
I'm sorry, guys, I got a jet, so I can meet, whatever you guys can meet, I can meet. Thanks, Andrew.
Bye, Andrew.
What's the time?
I mean, seven o'clock is is better for me, but I don't want to accept other people's thoughts wrongly. I could go the other way, too.
Why don't we keep the next one for six thirty and then after that at seven?
Okay, all right.
We have to notice.
July eighth, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay.
July eighth.
July. Any other board comments?
I just want to say thank you to Tracy for all her hard work on the website. It's like she put in unbelievable amount of hours. So I just want to say thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everyone's help. I just want to say a thank you to Steve for like just jumping in. Literally from day one and just really helping us do so much that we've been hoping to do. Thank you.
Yes.
No, no, I'm not, wait, no, you can go for you, go for it. Okay, first of all, I just want to thank Steve. This is a huge step forward for the township. A lot of other towns have this. This puts us on a much more competitive, you know, playing field for, you know, for people looking at our town to, you know, to join our community. So I just want to thank you. Also, Tracy, got to thank you for all the all the hours and hours and hours, you know. Just you're just really great teamwork and just want to thank everybody here for working so hard for the township. I'm done. Oh, and this, you were gonna say this. Yeah. Oh, okay, so on Tuesday, Tuesday evening, the township hosts a volunteer appreciation cocktail party. And and please, you know, please join, join on Tuesday evening between seven and nine. It's for it's it's for all of our hardworking volunteers and and it's something, it's it's really how we how we thank our volunteers. And we don't, we don't do enough for our volunteers, so please join us and 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 touch with us on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's for all the board members. If you have it as far as you can get.
Yeah.
You know, we might want to say was the summer. From G twenty four through August third, it starts.
Seven days.
Seven days a week, the whole time.
Wow.
One school's out. One school's out. And before school, that's it, get back in.
Just quickly, I also want to thank Steve particularly on going out there, meeting with the businesses. I think that's so primary important and this is great that you're doing this.
And thank you to Marla.
Yeah, thank you, Marla. Marla's doing a great job here.
I I, she's not like me. She doesn't have the big personality that, you know, wants to go out and take all the credit. So I got to give her, she's amazing. She's running the bands is a job in itself and she does it every week. And we've streamlined that process and it's all because of her. And we're, at this point, we have thirty shows this year. It's it's really, she's doing a great job.
And people are enjoying it and the restaurants are pretty full. Uh, no other comments? We have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion. Thanks.
It's.
Second.
All right.
It's actually not vacation, just one right.